So, welcome everybody to the second hearing of the committee's inquiry into PFAS contamination in waterways and drinking water supplies throughout New South Wales. I acknowledge the Dharig and Gundingarra people, the traditional custodians on the lands on which we are meeting today. I pay my respects to elders, past and present, and celebrate the diversity of Aboriginal peoples and their ongoing cultures and connections to the lands and waters of New South Wales. I also acknowledge and pay my respects to any Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people joining us today. My name is Kate Fairman and I am Chair of the Committee. I ask everyone in the room to please turn their mobile phones to silent. Parliamentary privilege applies to witnesses in relation to the evidence that they give today, however it does not apply to what witnesses say outside of the hearing. I urge witnesses to be careful about making comments to the media or to others after completing their evidence. In addition, the Legislative Council has adopted rules to provide procedural fairness for inquiry participants. I encourage committee members and witnesses to be mindful of these procedures. So, welcome and thank you for making the time to give evidence. So, could you please start by stating your name and position title and swear either an oath or an affirmation?
My name is John D. I'm the convener of the Stop PFAS community group here in the Blue Mountains. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thanks so much, Mr. D. Would you care to start by making a short opening statement?
Yes. Now, I just wanted to state I've got no conflicts of interest to declare and I've received no payment for my work on the PFAS initiative. I want to very quickly just set out my credentials and then set out the four key areas where I think I can best give you evidence on this issue. In terms of my expertise, I've been a professional environmentalist since 1986. I was the main co-founder of Planet Arc and I ran that organisation for many years. I write business guidebooks, which have shifted 140,000 copies. Well, I'm used to doing lots of research that has to be properly researched and annotated. I had, I wrote 115 episodes of my own TV show on Sky News Business Channel, all about business sustainability. So, I've done, I've got a huge amount of expertise in looking at issues, researching them and then communicating them. With regards to the water sector, I ran the Go Tap campaign. So, I've actually been, even though I'm in the media questioning the quality of tap water, after many years I've been an advocate of tap water, hence all the bubblers you see around New South Wales. And finally, my point on my credentials is that Sydney Water valued my expertise enough in 2021 to pay me to be interviewed by Sydney Water CEO Rock Shroh in front of Sydney Water staff. So, I'm viewed as someone who knows what they're talking about. I'll briefly cover the four key points and I would welcome questions on any of these matters. I particularly want to talk about our community and the impact it's had on us. And I want to cover the research that we've done into the actual causes of the PFAS contamination of our tap water. I want to talk about how government agencies have misled the community on the safety of PFAS in drinking water and how government agencies have conspired to withhold evidence from any media that asked tough questions. In particular, the ABC and Sydney Morning Herald have been blocked from interviewing ministers and I will detail that because I have internal correspondence to prove it. I want to talk about the health concerns of our community. Like many others in our community, I found that I've got dangerously high levels of cholesterol and I'm having to take medication for that. And despite that, the New South Wales Health and the New South Wales Health Minister will not undertake any community-wide blood testing to see the impact that this has had on our community. And finally, I want to finish off by talking about the NHMRC's current and incoming new drinking water guidelines, which clearly are not good enough. I'll quickly just cover off because I understand I've got five minutes to kind of do a brief introduction and then I can go into more detail. But in June 2024, Sydney Water undertook its first ever PFAS testing of our local Blue Mountains waterways. Before June 2024, they had done absolutely no testing of our drinking water and Water New South Wales had done no testing for PFAS of the drinking water dams. The testing we did have was only carried out because the Sydney Morning Herald carried out a campaign demanding, you know, action on, asking questions why Sydney Water weren't testing the PFAS, PFAS in our drinking water. Without that pressure from the Sydney Morning Herald, there's no doubt that we wouldn't be here today. We'd still be drinking contaminated water and we'd have no idea that our water had been so badly contaminated. Water New South Wales then found out that it had a major PFAS contamination of the water in its Blue Mountain dams. It was so bad, they've had to shut down two of the five dams that we have locally and those dams are still shut down today. As you can imagine, this discovery really rocked our community. Many of us moved here because we wanted to be in a pristine environment, bring up our kids. And we thought we were getting away from pollution. It turns out we came straight into the, into the heart of it. Yet, when we were told that this exposure to PFAS chemicals would have no impact on our health, and I truly believe that that is false. There are strong reasons why our community doesn't believe that and I'll quickly set those out because I think it's important to understand where we're coming from. Firstly, the PFOS levels in this Sydney Water June testing were 16.4 nanograms per litre. That was four times higher than the recommended safe levels of four nanograms per litre that were recently published by the NHMRC in their incoming draft Australian Drinking Water Guidelines. It's also four times higher than what is considered legally safe in America as well with their drinking water guidelines. The PFH excess levels were 13.6 nanograms per litre. That's above the 10 nanograms per litre safe level set out in America's National Primary Drinking Water Regulations. In addition to that, there are four other key issues where we do not trust the assurances. Sydney Water, Water New South Wales and the New South Wales Government and various political representatives have still not told the Blue Mountains community what year this PFAS contamination first occurred in. They have not told us where this PFAS contamination originated. They have not told us how long Blue Mountains residents have been drinking tap water contaminated with toxic PFAS forever chemicals. And very importantly, none of them have told us at what levels we've been drinking PFAS chemicals since this first contamination took place. Given that no PFAS testing of our drinking water was undertaken before June 2024, the simple fact is the government and its agencies and representatives have no data or testing to prove before June 2024 how high the levels we have been exposed to in our community. And I think that's a really critical point. We have pulled together our community into, under the Stop PFAS Community Initiative that I started, we have 1,100 local members. So, I'm not just here on my own today, I'm representing 1,100 people in our local community, but who are members, but representing, we hope, all of our community. Firstly, we want to know how long we had been drinking this contaminated water and I'll briefly take you through what we found. We found that New South Wales Fire and Rescue state on their website that in 2007, all firefighting foams containing PFOS were removed and destroyed. Now, given the main pollutant in our drinking water is PFOS, PFOS comes from firefighting chemicals. So, that indicates that we have been drinking contaminated drinking water, contaminated with PFOS since at least 2007. And no one in government is talking about this basic fact. So, we've been drinking this contaminated water for a very, very long time, since at least 2007. So, that's 16 to 17 years. But we wanted to find out the causes of this because when we've been asking questions of Water New South Wales, they have been not forthcoming. They've refused to let us test the local drinking water dams. They've been very uncooperative in our view. Everyone in our community said, when we asked the question, where are, where had there, has there been a very large usage of firefighting foam in our community? Everyone points to the 1992, September 92 petrol tanker crash in Medlo Bath. The locals took us to where the crash scene, where the crash took place. It was extremely close to a waterway entrance that leads to the drinking water dam. At most, it's about 80 metres away from the crash scene. Our testing in October last year of the waterway near that crash scene showed PFOS levels at 2,200 nanograms per litre and PFH excess levels at 980 nanograms per litre. Now, to put that in context, that is raw water, but if you look at drinking water, the new incoming Safe Water Guidelines in Australia are four nanograms per litre. So, 2,200 nanograms per litre is what is happening right now in Medlo Bath in running water that leads into Adams Creek that leads into Medlo Dam. We then obtained news footage of the firefighting crews from a local camera operator. We've got all the raw footage and we obtained helicopter footage from Channel 7. What they clearly showed was a huge amount of foam, firefighting foam ended up in our creek in the Blue Mountains in Medlo Bath. And that leads us to the conclusion that our drinking water, well, what we do know for sure is that Blue Mountains waterways have been severely polluted with PFAS forever chemicals since 1992. That pollution took place in a tributary that led into Adams Creek, which feeds into Medlo Dam. And Water New South Wales have admitted that now Adams Creek is the focus of their investigation. And that leads us to believe that we've been drinking PFAS contaminated water since 1992. So, we've been drinking this for 32 years. And again, what government is not talking about is how long we've been drinking it and what levels. And the reality is whether we accept the 2007 figure or the 1992 figure, there is absolutely zero data, zero testing to show what levels we've been exposed to. And I'll just in 30 seconds wrap up with the rest. I'm really keen to talk about the way the public and the media have been misled by the media and I would welcome questions about how the government agencies conspire to ensure that the ABC and the Sydney Morning Herald were deliberately refused interviews with the minister relating to the PFAS contamination here in the Blue Mountains. The same documents that I can read to you today also show how government agencies work together to ensure that no minister would debate our community in the media regarding our community's exposure to PFAS chemicals. I'm very keen to talk about the lack of blood testing in our community to see what impact this PFAS exposure has had on the health of our community. And finally, I'm keen to give detailed evidence, evidence on how the National Health and Medical Research Council, also known as NHMRC, has failed to protect the Australian public from PFAS chemicals in their drinking water. I want to ask why the NHMRC failed to directly liaise with the US EPA, who tell us that the in writing, the NHMRC did not consult them regarding why America sets such tough regulations on PFAS chemicals in drinking water. And normally I cover all these kind of issues in a 45-minute presentation. I clearly don't have that today, but I'm happy to take any questions you have.
Thank you, Mr. D. That was very comprehensive and I might just state at the outset just that this is a state parliamentary inquiry. So, possibly the questions around the NHMRC and the US EPA, people obviously can ask what they want, but we may not have time to cover that. And there's a Senate inquiry going on into this same issue, of course. I'll just begin with the first question. So, you make the point in your opening statement and the submission that if it wasn't for an investigation by the Sydney Morning Herald, Sydney Water would still not be testing for PFAS. And that Sydney Water stated in June that there are no known PFAS hotspots in our drinking water catchments. They didn't look very hard, did they?
No, they didn't. So, I actually get on very well with Rock Shroh, who's the CEO of Sydney Water. I've known him and as I said, Sydney Water paid me to be interviewed by Rock in front of their staff. When I asked Rock Shroh why they hadn't tested any of our water, he said they'd done a desktop risk analysis, which basically means they looked at the contamination that was taking place in places like Richmond, in military bases and, and where firefighting foam had been used very regularly. And they come to the conclusion that because no PFAS chemicals have been made in the Blue Mountains, that, you know, they considered it almost zero risk. And so therefore, they had not done any water testing. And what's been very clear is that there's also many other communities, both in New South Wales and around the country, where water authorities have just basically done no testing unless it's been slammed in their faces right in front of them. I should point out for members of the inquiry that how inept government has been on this particular area, both at a state and federal level. A gentleman called Charles Awa from the US EPA wrote an official warning in writing to the Australian Federal Government back in May 2000, warning them about 3M's PFAS chemicals. 3M clearly were about to be outed and finally told the US EPA just how toxic the PFAS chemicals were in their firefighting foam. And as of two, three days ago, Rob Bilow, the lawyer from America, has given me an unredacted copy of that letter, which I'm happy to submit to the inquiry. Basically, nothing, nothing happened because the very first time that we then get any testing in the Blue Mountains is June 2024. I asked Sydney Water why it was that they hadn't tested earlier. The first testing Sydney Water did in New South Wales was in 2015. That was the very first time they bothered to actually test any water for PFAS chemicals. So, they cannot argue that in 2015 onwards, they did not know of the risk of PFAS chemicals. But the reality is, as a professional environmentalist, I was aware of the 3M issue in 2000, when this first became a major global story. And one has to ask questions as to why Sydney Water totally failed, just as a basic matter of professional, professional pride, that they didn't actually bother to do some basic testing. PFAS is really easy to test for. You've got to be very careful how you test for it, but it's not a difficult test to do. And many countries around the world have been testing since the early 2000s. And why we didn't do it is beyond me.
Does it, does it sound to you, Mr. D, that they prefer not to know because once they knew the problem is probably too big, they think, to deal with? Like, this is the impression that I'm certainly getting at this point, that they don't want to know what's out there because it's just going to be too big to clean up?
So, there's certainly, if you look at the quote you said at the start, where before Sydney Water undertook their testing in June 2024, they told the media, I believe it was the ABC, there were no PFAS hotspots anywhere in the Sydney Water drinking catchment. Yet, as with many other claims that have been made on PFAS, it was based with no testing and no data to back that up. And so, what I have been told by people in the water sector confidentially is that they're quite happy not to test for PFAS because once you test for it, you know you're going to find it. And if you look at the PFAS map that is available online, which is in my submission, you, we've gone from a situation where there was hundreds of PFAS hotspots around Australia, where we're now starting to get into the thousands of PFAS hotspots. That is purely because people are actually bothering to test for the first time. Are we testing enough? No, we're not. If you look around the country, again, I know this is not New South Wales, but SEQ Water in Brisbane were just caught out, you know, with freedom of information, having 10 members of staff whose sole job was to stop that journalist finding out just how bad the PFOA contamination was in Brisbane's tap water. And it set out exactly how they planned to stop him finding out and if need be, offer him an exclusive to do a different story. So, I've worked with the water sector. When I ran the Go Tap campaign, I was given keynote speeches in lots of major water industry events. So, I got to know the culture of the water sector. The, the culture is very blokey. As an example, actually in this very room, when Sydney Water, Water New South Wales and New South Wales Health came to, you know, say to our community on two days' notice that, "Don't worry, the water is safe." One of the head engineers from Sydney Water sat where you are, Ms. Fairman, and said to me that if I wanted to carry on my good relationship with Sydney Water, I had to pull my head in. And so, the attitude is keep quiet. There's a song sheet in the water industry. It says, "Australia has the best tap water in the world." Keep singing that song. And that's what they've done. And if you question that song and the claim that we have the best tap water in the world, then you are very quickly on the out of within the water sector.
Thank you. I've got other members for questions. So, Deputy Chair, Mr. Martin.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Mr. D, for appearing today and your work in this area. I just want to take you back to the very beginning of your opening statement, where you made the link between your own levels of cholesterol and these forever chemicals. Are you able to give us a bit of an overview as to the link between the two?
Yeah. So, if you look at PFAS chemicals, they're known to have a variety of potential impacts on people's health. There's, you know, probably the best known one in the media is the potential link to, you know, the cancer-causing aspect of PFAS chemicals, particularly PFOA, which the World Health Organisation said in 2023 was a definite carcinogen. So, it causes cancer in humans. Luckily, the levels of PFOA in Australia are not as bad as in America. However, in Brisbane recently, they were at 30 parts per trillion in filtered drinking water and 34 parts per trillion in raw water. When you consider, in America, it's four parts per trillion is a safe level. It's, PFOS chemicals are also associated with high cholesterol levels. And there's, as you see in my submission, there are a number of scientific papers which have looked into in detail at that. And if you, on speaking, I spoke at length with the US EPA. They had about 2,100 peer-reviewed documents and research reports into the impacts of PFAS chemicals. And again, many of those documents, which there's a link in my submission to that, indicated that it is known that high cholesterol in people is a known side effect of long-term exposure to PFAS chemicals, in particular PFOS. When I spoke to Rob Bilow, who's our legal advisor in America, he's the man who was portrayed by Mark Ruffalo in the film Dark Waters, he said Australian, the Australian health sector is very, very behind on accepting the very strong link between PFAS chemicals and increased cholesterol. And if, before this broke as a news story, I turned 60 and I thought, okay, I should go and get some blood tests just to do a general health check on myself. So, just because I decided to go and get tested, this is the only reason I know that I have dangerously high cholesterol. So, I've got a cholesterol level of 7.5. So, that means I have to take medication to try and bring that down. What has really, really worried me is since I went public on that in our Stop PFAS community group on Facebook, I have been inundated by people saying, "I've got really high cholesterol levels too and I'm on medication. What are you?" You know, and everybody, like as an example, I was in a cafe recently and there were eight of us around the table. And I mentioned the fact that I'd had a really difficult afternoon and I had to go to sleep because the medication was having an impact on me. And another person said to me, "Oh, yeah, I've, I've got that too and I've just had to start taking medication." And then another person said it and another person said it. So, half of the people at the table, there was eight of us, four of us, were having to take medication for very high levels of cholesterol. You know, and cholesterol can lead to strokes, heart disease and various other issues. It was so bad for me, I had to have one of those scans on my heart to test if there was any long-term damage. But there's also a range, as I set out in my submission, lots of other health impacts that can be had from PFAS chemicals. And what worries us is given that we know there are lots of people in the Blue Mountains with very high cholesterol levels. Now, this could come from other issues. You can get high cholesterol from other health issues, from other sources. But I do not understand why the New South Wales Health and New South Wales Health Minister will not do the most basic blood testing of our community. So, we've been told by journalists that when they've inquired with New South Wales Health as to why they aren't doing blood testing of the Blue Mountains community, they've just said they have no plans to do so because the water is safe. And I hope in my opening statement that I've given cause to explain why we are, we do not believe the assurances that we've been given because it's a bit like Sydney Water saying there's no hotspots. You know, if you have not done the testing, if you don't have testing and data to back your, up your claim, you should not be making that claim. And we, we believe strongly that if you look at the health impacts here, it does appear that way too many people do have dangerously high levels of cholesterol in their system. And I believe we need a community-wide testing to assess, are we the same as other communities or despite, or is it because of our long-term exposure to PFAS chemicals, are we actually substantially higher than other communities?
Totally agree. Thank you.
Great. We've got questions from the opposition, Mr. Scott Parrott.
Thank you, Mr. D. Are you concerned there's still PFAS entering the waterways?
There's definitely PFAS in our waterways in the Blue Mountains. The issue that the authorities have been doing, and quite rightly in this instance, is to make sure that what we're drinking does not have PFAS chemicals in. So, we would agree with the strategy that's been undertaken, which is to make sure we take the PFAS chemicals out of the drinking water. And that was one of our initial demands and we're very glad the government have done that. Why do we know we've definitely got PFAS in our waterways? Basically, once we saw the footage of the firefighters in 1992 and you can clearly see the foam going directly into the waterway that leads to Adams Creek, that Adams Creek that goes directly to the drinking water dam. Dr. Ian Wright, who's an independent water testing expert, together with EnviroLab, which is tests to professional conditions, we got Dr. Wright to go and take samples from running water. It's important to stress, we took samples from running water in Medlo Bath itself, probably about 200 metres in from the crash scene where the foam first entered. And so, we know that the PFOS levels today from that foam that was used 32 years ago, it's left a footprint of chemical contamination where the running still has to take 200 nanograms per litre of PFOS. And as I mentioned, a substantially very high number as well of the PFH excess. So, we know that is still in our waterways. And what the EPA are doing now, after our request was initially declined by the Water Minister, the EPA is also now testing the fish in our local community because we've asked that given how, where there is PFAS chemical contamination, it is so high, nobody is looking at the impact that is having on the platypuses, the fish, the wildlife that are dependent on that, that water. And that is, I think, a really key concern that we have in our community.
Sorry, are you concerned it's still entering, like new sources are entering our waterway?
No, so, this, because I think it's a very good question. So, they're called forever chemicals because once those forever chemicals get into, contaminate an area, they almost stay there forever, for a substantially long time. So, that's why we know, if you look at the PFOS stopped being used by the fire service in 2007, according to their website. So, that means that where did that PFOS, where did the PFOS chemicals in that currently contaminate the water in Medlo Bath, where do they come from? Well, there is only one crash that took place with a large amount of foam in that part of the Blue Mountains and it was the 1992 petrol tanker crash. And so, we tested exactly where that foam entered the water. So, unfortunately, when PFOS chemicals get into the environment, they stay there. And even though it's in running water, we're still seeing dangerously high levels of PFOS that are in running water in Medlo Bath, leading towards the Medlo Dam, which is still shut due to that PFAS contamination.
Have you, can you point to, you sort of imply it's South East Queensland, weren't doing it well, but other regimes that are testing and filtering well? Are there other places we should be looking at?
So, this is one of the issues. There is not a national database where you can go online, and this is one thing we're wanting to see in Australia. We believe that we should have a national testing regime where every single water authority tests two things. One, the raw water that supplies their drinking water facilities and again, a test at the filtration plant. And whether they meet the drinking water guidelines or not, those, we believe that those tests should be disclosed on a regular basis where you could type in your postcode and find out exactly what the PFAS levels are in your water, in your local community. Because there is a tendency in the water sector to cover up when they have a problem. And certainly, if you look at the freedom of information that's come out of Queensland, there was a blatant, ridiculously blatant cover-up. And if you look at the letters that I would like to read to the panel today, there was also a collusion between all the government agencies in New South Wales to cover up just how bad things were and they blocked the ABC. They actually talk in the letter about how they were blocking the ABC and the Sydney Morning Herald from interviewing the minister, from having any engagement with me and any engagement with the Blue Mountains community. And that, that causes us real concern that when there is a problem in the water sector, they go into full cover-up mode. And, and we certainly saw the cover-up mode going into place with the PFAS chemicals here in the Blue Mountains.
I think, yeah, we should explore that a bit more, at least get to the table then. But what about internationally? There are other international jurisdictions that are doing this testing and reporting?
Yeah. So, if you look at, so Minnesota's very interesting. So, Minnesota really was where a lot of this began with 3M. So, Tim Walls, who stood as vice president candidate, vice presidential candidate, signed into law, law basically banning PFAS and phasing it out in, in, and so, they've done a lot of very good testing in Minnesota. If you look at America, there's 2,100, you know, peer-reviewed reports, they've, they've gone and looked in detail. And so, America now has been, the Biden administration, that's just finished up, have been giving billions of dollars to water entities. 3M have been forced to come to an agreement in court to pay 10 and a half billion to 12 and a half billion US dollars, that was last year, to public water entities to allow them to both test more for PFAS chemicals in their waterways and also try and remediate and put in place filtration to remove PFAS chemicals from their drinking water supply. There are five countries in the European Union which are now calling for a phase out of PFAS chemicals and products. And so, in Europe, we're now starting, we're seeing a lot more testing for PFAS chemicals as well.
And did you obviously wanted to go a bit more into this collusion you were talking about?
Yeah. Look, I guess from, from my standpoint, I, I'm a professional communicator. So, I've made 350 TV adverts. I have made, I've written hundreds of media releases and I've had my own TV show. So, I really know how comms work. And so, if I may, I wouldn't mind just getting up, here it is. So, what concerned me was there seemed to be like a, I know the water sector well enough that when there's an issue, there's a song sheet that is produced and everyone sings off that song sheet. off that song sheet. And, and I know I've had meetings with Rock Shero, and it's interesting that what Rock was saying in that meeting is then almost repeated word for word, when Water New South Wales and Sydney Water came here, they were saying exactly the same stuff. And then you hear Professor Stuart Khan, you know, both in The Guardian and on radio and on TV, saying exactly the same things. And I would point out that when he's been doing those interviews, what Professor Khan has not done is disclose, he's actually a, he's been a contractor recently for Sydney Water. And, you know, he's put across as being an independent academic, but he's actually a paid, he's been a paid contractor to Sydney Water, and I've got that on Sydney Water Letterhead that I can submit to the inquiry to verify that. He's also a chair of an important NHMRC committee, and yet when he's talking about the guidelines, I've not seen any media articles where he discloses his, his role with the NHMRC. And my concern is, again, you know, we've had our local member for Parliament, Trish Doyle, talking about how safe our water is. And only last week, in a media water, in a Sydney Water press release, Ms Doyle was talking, saying how grateful she was to Sydney Water for all their efforts in delivering us high-quality water. The exact quote is in the, the media release that they, that they, that they put out. What concerns me is that this collusion that's taken place, I'll, I'll read the letters for you, so you can actually hear it for yourself. So basically, I did an interview with Simon Marney on his radio show on ABC, and Simon Marney had been saying that he had been trying for years to get someone to come on his programme at a ministerial level or any kind of senior level to explain what the, the approach was to dealing with PFAS chemicals in our community, you know, both in terms of whether it's military bases or in drinking water, et cetera. And so no one was ever getting back to him. So he was complaining about this live on air. So basically Catherine Colk, who works, she's senior media adviser for Water Group at the New South Wales Department of Climate Change, Energy, the Environment and Water. I've got her email that she sent to Sydney Water, and it was copied into other people as well. She said, "Hi Sky and LLD, flagging this interview with John D Wentworth on ABC on Saturday, which was highly critical of Sydney Water and the minister for, quote, 'not being available to go on air and answer questions over PFAS.' It also opens with the implication that, quote, 'residents in the Blue Mountains have unwittingly been drinking contaminated water,' quote, and that government is, quote, 'too busy to talk to them, simply providing statements that don't answer their basic questions.' Their argument continues to hinge on American PFAS guidelines being lower than Australian guidelines, therefore they don't believe that the water is safe to drink. Not sure if you were contacted with an interview request over the weekend, or whether it would be worth it for the minister or Sydney Water to go on ABC to dispel some myths. We'll obviously need to coordinate with the whole of Government Group." So that is our first acknowledgement, there's a whole of Government Group dealing with the communication of this. For your information, this one was flagged by Amanda Jones as particularly concerning, and let us know if we can assist with anything, interview below. Then basically, she gets the reply, and this is the one that kind of really sets out just how much collusion there was between government agencies on making sure the, the public did not get the full story on the Blue Mountains. So it was Emily Waters, who's media manager at Sydney Water, her reply to, again, all these people was, "Hi Catherine, thanks for reaching out regarding the blow. ABC contacted all relevant agencies, including the minister's office, Sydney Water and Water New South Wales, for an interview. In a show of unity..." So she literally types, "In a show of unity, all agencies, including Sydney Water declined the interview. This decision was measured and considered and reflects our collective approach to the situation." So clearly setting out this is a, this whole thing has been, there's a large collusion going on. "At this stage, Sydney Water, Water New South Wales and the minister have received the brunt of the criticism, so while we understand your concern, it is more appropriate to let us work out the best approaches moving forward. For additional contacts, contacts, we were well-prepared and anticipated the comments that Simon Marney was going to make, this was not a surprise, and Sky and I had extensive discussions in anticipation of this. Sydney Water will not be engaging with ABC Radio on this topic." So they're actually stating very clearly, and they're, they're not going to engage with the ABC, the main public broadcaster. "There is no way I will be putting up a rep to speak, to be ambushed by these guys, and potentially put our talent in a position where John D confronts him live on radio, and, this is incorrect, and forced to debate him. The impact of putting someone outweighs the benefit, as they have their agenda, like the SMH. You know, our agenda, our agenda is, we want a drink bloody well, safe drinking water, and we want to know what the impact has been on us. So that's our, that's our so-called agenda, but we're treated like somehow we're doing something wrong. It doesn't matter what you tell them or try to dispel their arguments, they are set on their course, and no amount of reasoning will work. That's how they view our community. We do provide statements, they simply choose not to use them. There is also wealth of background, activity and information being responded to by the relevant agencies. Rest assured, we are actively working to address the situation, even if they don't like what they're being told. Thanks again, Emily Waters." And that tells you that, you know, the main public broadcaster is being deliberately ostracised and kept away from any interviews with the minister and, and blocked from getting information.
Okay, I just need to make sure all members get time to ask questions. So thanks, Mr Deane. Go to government members, looking if they do. Mr Donnelly.
Yeah, back to 2015. Could you please just return to that reference in your opening comments about what actually happened then in terms of work done to look at or comment or reflect on the matter?
Yeah, so I, I've always, you know, I get on well with Rock Shero at Sydney Water, and I always believe even if you're on different sides of the fence on a topic, you've got to remain friendly and liaise with each other. So I met up face-to-face with Rock at Sydney Water to ask him, you know, "When did you first know about PFAS chemicals?" Because I was aware at that point that we'd been warned formally by the US government in the year, May 2000, about the dangers of PFAS chemicals. So I was interested in finding out, when did they actually, when did that warning turn into some kind of action, into awareness, and that awareness turned into action? So I asked Rock Shero, "When was it that Sydney Water first became aware, and when did they first start testing?" So it, it appears that the, clearly the contamination that was taking place near military bases in Australia, you know, the, the legal action had started, so it was very clear this was going to end up in the courts, there was clear that there was going to be substantial payouts, which for some reason, the Australian government is funding rather than 3M, who caused the pollution in the first place, which I think needs to be addressed. And so the very first testing that Sydney Water did was in 2015, and they restricted that testing to what they considered to be high-risk areas, areas that were at high risk of contamination. So my understanding is that they kept their testing to those kind of military-type bases. Sydney Water will give you a more appropriate answer, given it's their decision. So I don't want to talk on their behalf, but that is what I was told. With regards to other communities, they took, they did what Rock Shero called a desktop risk analysis, which was, "Is there any risk? Oh, no." You know, so instead of just doing a relatively easy PFAS test, they didn't bother. And yet, they went out to the community through ABC and other media and incorrectly told us there were no PFAS hotspots. There were no PFAS hotspots because they didn't bother testing for them, because if they had tested for them, they would have found them. And as we are now seeing, that, as the testing now rolls out around New South Wales, we're now starting to see a lot more PFAS hotspots now being recorded.
Okay, thanks.
Just to follow up on that, so the response now, though, has been much faster, hasn't it, since the revelations in the Sydney Morning Herald? You've got a degree of action from local government, also from the state government agencies to, as you said, prioritise making that water safe. So the drinking water that's coming in is being prioritised, and in contrast to 2015, there is action, it's happening quite quickly now. May not be enough, as you say, but it is moving forward.
I think the main reason why is that we, I was on the front page of the Sydney Morning Herald, and I'd lined up a lot of lawyers to sue the government on behalf of our community. So there's no doubt that one of the reasons why the government moved is that we were going to sue them. And we had been working with a number of lawyers, both here and overseas, to undertake that legal action, and we were going to undertake that legal action if we didn't get drinking water that we considered to be safe. The, the reason why they, the government moved to reduce, to, to move finally to take action on the, to take PFAS out of source at the Cascade Filtration Plant, is the NHMRC finally got their act together with regards to the PFOS levels in the incoming drinking water guidelines, which the current drinking water guidelines for the water you're drinking today here are woeful. They are utterly not fit for purpose. And so the NHMRC were changing the, what's considered acceptable safe levels of PFOS down to four parts per trillion, four nanograms litres, which is the same as America. And so Sydney Water and the government knew that as soon as the, so the NHMRC had published draft guidelines to say it was going to go to four parts per trillion. Now, that means that, once they were introduced, this farcical nonsense that the, the, you know, the government and agencies and representatives have been saying that, "Well, our water meets the Australian drinking water guidelines, therefore we're told it's safe." That was a very convenient excuse, and everyone hid behind those inept NHMRC guidelines, which we still currently have. But what was going to happen is, coming into this year, once that hits four parts per trillion, they knew we were going to be drinking unsafe drinking water, and then we had clear grounds to sue. And so one of the reasons why, I would say the key reason why they've moved to do that is they knew that they were legally exposed. And I think that's, it's a matter of pure self-interest that they finally moved to do it.
Yeah, and look, I just want to come back to one last issue, which was, you made the comment earlier, and it's also in your submission that you advocate for much wider testing. So testing of waterways, testing of the water that's consumed.
Yep.
Also blood testing to test PFAS levels in the population. And the comment you made was that it's relatively easy to do that testing. Can you just take me through that? How easy is it?
Yeah, so, I mean, this is an interesting point, again, in terms of the lack of disclosure by Sydney Water. So at the moment, Sydney Water on their website are disclosing three PFAS chemicals. And so I've been asking Rock Shero, you know, are you, are you really only testing for three chemicals?
Don't we need to get a standardised test first?
Yeah, I'm going to come on to that, because.
Where we know what we're testing for?
If I can give you an example, because, Mr Murphy, it's a very good question, because there is a lack of, there needs to be some kind of national standard that standardises testing, because if you look at Bathurst, they're testing for more than 30 PFAS chemicals. So I asked in writing to Rock Shero, you know, "How many PFAS chemicals are you testing for in Blue Mountains water?", because they're only reporting on three of them. And so it turns out, I was told just before Christmas, Sydney Water have been testing for 40 PFAS chemicals, and they're only telling us about three of them. And my, my argument is that whether you're.
I mean, aren't there more than 14,000 varieties of PFAS chemicals?
There are, but in terms of the chemicals that are of most concern, this is what I'm told to.
I mean, it just seems to me that if you were to test for all 14,000 of them, it would be a very complex and quite expensive exercise.
Well, no, there is a, there is a way, it's, my understanding, I think it's called a T O R test, which Rob Bilow took me through, and I referred to it in my submission. But just to finish that, my answer to that, we found that Sydney Water are at least testing for 40, which 40 is better than nothing. My, my view is that we should be testing for all of them, and that we should be phasing out and banning PFAS chemicals. But I do want to let you know that, and reveal to this inquiry and to the media and to the Blue Mountains public, there's really strong reason why we should have all PFAS chemicals tested for, as you've alluded to. Because over Christmas, when they were putting in place the water filtration plant, we had a spike in a brand, in a PFAS chemical that we've never had an issue with in this community. Rock Shero said as a one-off, he was sending me through this, he sent me very kindly, and I would be, I want to say thank you to Rock Shero for sending this, he sent me the results from the 40 chemicals they tested for over a period of four weeks in December. There was a spike in the PFBA PFAS chemical, where that was the majority PFAS chemical of the top five chemicals that are of most concern. And yet, they didn't tell anybody. They haven't, I don't think they've told the Water Minister, they certainly haven't gone public with that. And yet, one of the things I'd like to do for the inquiry is submit some new evidence that I found, and this is one of them, where, you know, we've had a spike in the PFBA chemical in our local drinking water, and nobody was told. I only found out because I actually analysed all 40 chemicals over a period of four weeks, and mapped it and put it in a pie chart. And yet, that has not been told. And so I think that there should be full testing for all PFAS chemicals, and I think certainly we should also see, you know, all those tests being made public.
Thank you, Mr Murphy, we're actually at time.
Can I just, one follow-up, and could you take this on notice? Are you able to provide the committee with some information about what that might cost to implement your testing regime?
Yes, I can, I'll come back to you.
Thank you, thank you, Mr Deane. Thanks so much for your evidence. Clearly, I think you've got a lot of information to provide the committee after this, there's quite a few documents you referred to, so the secretariat will be in touch with you about that. Committee members can of course also put in questions to you afterwards, and the secretariat will be in touch with you if that's the case. Thanks so much for your very extensive work for your community in this area. Thank you.
Thank you for having me this morning, appreciate it.
I'll now call our next witnesses. To this next session, we'll begin by getting you both sworn in. So we'll start with you, Ms Kennedy. If you could please state your name and position, title, and swear either an oath or affirmation.
My name's Emma Kennedy. I'm the acting program leader for the Healthy Waterways team at Blue Mountain City Council. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Thank you very much. And Mr Langvad, is it?
Langvad, yes. So I'm William Langvad, I'm the Director of Environment and Planning Services at Blue Mountain City Council. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Thank you, thank you very much. Now, is there a short opening statement one of you would like to make, or both?
Yes, I'll start with a short opening statement. So the Blue Mountains Local Government Area, by way of context, is located just over 50 kilometres west of Sydney CBD, on the traditional lands of the Darug and Gundengarra people. It is one of only two cities in the world surrounded by World Heritage Area. Blue Mountains Waterways sustain enormous diversity of life, contribute to both local and regional drinking water supplies for over 5 million people, and provide a significant recreation tourism resource for Greater Sydney and the world generally. The living waterways of the Blue Mountains also hold great cultural significance for Darug and Gundengarra people. The Blue Mountains LGA is home to 80,000 residents, it hosts over 4 million domestic international tourists a year, is located within the surrounds of the Greater Blue Mountains World Heritage Area, and has 350 square kilometres of subcatchments which drain into Sydney's water-drinking catchments and the primary drinking water source of Greater Sydney. From an urban governance perspective, and just to note, I've been leading council's planning for the better part of two decades, the provision of safe and reliable water supply is the critical urban infrastructure. Expectations around its management are understandably very high, not just with community, but with the council and all stakeholders who we work with, both state and the Commonwealth. The Blue Mountain City Council is a primary stakeholder at the interface affected communities and the potentially catastrophic environmental impacts leading from the PFAS contamination, and we'll talk to that in a moment. The level of concern demonstrated by our local community cannot be ignored, and in response to this, the council calls for a full and proper account of what caused the elevated PFAS levels and the impact to the environment and community health. And that's as per a mayor minute, which was passed unanimously by council on the 30th of October 2024. By way of summary, a high-level summary, we're looking at rigorous and proactive public testing for contamination as a basic expectation for urban management. Investigations into the cause or causes of contamination, the proposals to eliminate PFAS from the areas drinking water, the remediation and prevention strategies proposed by the New South Wales Government, and the timely completion of the current review of PFAS levels in the Australian Drinking Water Guidelines, which as we know are well progressed, and appropriate responses to ensure the safety. and appropriate responses to ensure the safety and drinking water supply to Blue Mountains community is in keeping with the new guidelines. By way of important context in terms of council's role, there is a direct line of sight from the Commonwealth through the Australian Drinking Water Guidelines, through to the responsibility of each state and territory to manage drinking water and standards applied to it, through to council's role and particularly as our interface with community. So as this issue has emerged, there's been representations made to council by concerned community, by concerned constituents. And it's really in this role that the council has its key role. Like many agencies, we're concerned with urban governance, environmental governance, and that's why we see the need for the proactive assessment and monitoring of water. So we have confidence that the most critical urban infrastructure has been properly and fully managed. And that'll do us nothing.
Okay, thank you. Nothing from you, Ms Kennedy? Is that, yeah, okay, great, thank you. I'll just start with question, a question regarding consultation generally, and this is prior to June 2024, so prior to the water being tested. What role did council play in helping identify contaminated sites, PFAS contaminated sites? So did you, there's been a history with the EPA working with the, you know, fire and rescue, for example. Was there any role that the Blue Mountain City Council played in saying, you know, looking at this historically, looking at this site? Were you contacted about that? Were you involved in any committees?
No, I don't have awareness of it. I mean, council has a role working with the water board as it was in the early eighties to define the inner catchments or the special areas. These are highly restricted areas in terms of development. And so council is a consent authority for managing development within some of the catchments. Some are of course within national park areas. But certainly it was Sydney Catchment Authority in the late nineties and then through to Water New South Wales who had that primary responsibility. We became aware of the PFAS issue around the time the public did, so particularly in, from June 2024. And, and obviously, as I said, we were approached by community at that time and we undertook our own testing of our recreational water courses and primary contact areas. And that's where, you know, we were able to test ourselves and fairly readily identify, even from the information that became available in 2024, where the sources of contamination were likely to be. So we very much saw them as a point source contamination, which we, and there was discussions anecdotally about firefighting foam generally and, and the potential for that to be a contaminant within that Medlo Bath area.
Yeah, you, because your submission does make the point about the Blue Mountains being a highly bushfire prone area with a history of use of firefighting foams. Clearly, you know, we think of, of so many fires actually across the state and the use of firefighting foams historically, but particularly in this area. Then you've also got here the history of major crash incidents long, requiring the use of firefighting foam, the waterways feeding these dams connect directly to the Great Western Highway and Medlo Bath. You make the point that it's understandable that many community members therefore see this as a breach of trust by government agencies, the fact that they didn't at least not identify contamination in the area, but at least suspect that there could be and then actually act to see what was going on. Would you care to expand upon that?
Yeah, so it's with the first point I made, so if we take ourselves to, to June 2024, so as you've identified, the Blue Mountains is one of the most bushfire prone areas in the country. So we've had very close involvement with the RFS, obviously most recently with the Black Summer Fires. An example there, I was the acting CEO during the Black Summer Fires, I was meeting with the incident control each day for a period of three weeks. We also know the fire was in, in close proximity to Warrigamba Dam and we saw explicit instructions and efforts by national parks and RFS to monitor the procedures and processes followed to, to deal with firefighting in proximity to that water body. There was understanding then clearly that you need to be careful and, you know, in relation to the approaches that are adopted. Once we became aware of the issue in 2024 in, in June, July, the issue for us became understanding the catchments. As I mentioned, the inner catchments are highly protected. We don't have a situation of development in those areas. We don't have a situation where the neutral or beneficial effect on water quality was breached in any way. So what we were looking for was that understanding, working with Water New South Wales, who approached us at that time, what were the potential activities that could have given rise to a contamination event? A lot of our staff, including our, our manager of environment and our emergency management team, are, are very practiced firefighters, captains, deputy captains in, in fire brigades. And there was a general awareness of the potential for foam being used in relation to RFS activities, particularly training activities, particularly in vicinity of Medlo Bath and that particular catchment. So the question became, if we had had testing done, not in June 2024, but in 2015, et cetera, et cetera, you would have been locating that contamination and then being able to work up each stream in the tributaries to understand where was that, that localized pollution coming from. So just to be clear, council's role as a planning authority is one of protecting the inner catchments, which it does hand in glove with the state government and the lead agencies. Particularly on that count, I'll just add, like when we had the creation of the Sydney Catchment Authority at the end of the nineties in relation to the Warrigamba Dam incident, which we're all very familiar with, those authorities work very closely with council in the planning process. So they have what we call a concurrents role where they sign off on activities in relation to those catchments. So it's highly regulated. So we had to turn our thinking to those, either the firefighting foams in relation to RFS activities or potentially to the truck accidents that we've been mentioned in relation to the Great Western Highway. The highway is a road of, of national importance and there had been truck accidents particularly in that area as well.
Thank you. This is my last question before I throw to others. Is council concerned about what PFAS contamination in the waterways that you've identified, whether that could put at risk the World Heritage values of the Blue Mountains World Heritage Area?
Yeah, I mean, councils gives great primacy to the World Heritage values. We're obviously a key part of, of the nomination, managing the urban interface, as we call it, between the Blue Mountains Settlement and the World Heritage Area. So that's why we're so concerned with water quality, along with state government agencies who've, who've led that work also. And that's why the neutral beneficial effect test was brought in to, to stop that impact or limit that impact on the World Heritage Area. We know that water is not just important to the Darug and Gundengarra people, but anyone involved in environmental regulation and the community, that we have a situation that Blue Mountains is located above the drinking water catchments. Its geography is such that all water moves down into that, into that catchment, a lot of which is a national park and drinking water catchment. So anything that contaminates that water supply is a high level concern for council and certainly the community as well. In terms of the listing risks, we've had a number of risk areas. There was obviously the Black Summer Bushfire and the environmental impact from that. Council's on record as raising concern with the Western Sydney National Airport and the potential risks there. And this would be in that category as well.
Okay, thank you. We'll go to questions from the opposition, Mrs Atlin McDonald.
Chair, thank you for coming today. And I note in your submission that you state that community members are experiencing distress and anxiety over the long term exposure to PFAS. What specific guidance or support has the New South Wales Government provided to, to help address or alleviate these health concerns?
Last year, Water New South Wales and Sydney Water did a number of community engagement sessions in the mountains and answered various questions from the community on their concerns. That's pretty much the extent of, of that. I think John D has probably commented on the impact of that and the adequacy of that.
And so just as a follow on, have you received any reports on the elevated health issues? As the previous witness said, you know, with regard to high cholesterol or cancers among local residents? So have you received any other further reports about that?
Not, not to my knowledge, but I guess the, the, the big point to make here in terms of community concerns is that because the, the testing for PFAS only began in June last year and yet it seems clear that this pollution has been happening potentially for many decades, we don't actually have a data set there that we can refer back to, to understand what the elevated, what the levels of exposure to the community have been. So particularly, yeah, so, so that's, that's a big area of concern is just, just we, we actually don't know what we've been exposed to over and for how long.
And, and also you, you have made, like in your submission, the formal request for New South Wales Health to conduct community wide PFAS blood testing. Have you followed that up with a request too or is it just in your submission?
Council has written a letter to the Commonwealth Minister for Health and Age Care requesting, and I have a copy of the letter here, which I can table for, for the inquiry.
And if, so New South Wales Health refused, like in your request to do, conduct testing, would the council consider partnering with independent medical researchers at all to get a sort of a base?
Yeah, I might take that. I think the, the issue is, you know, the role of state government is fairly significant here as a catchment, catchment manager, water supply manager and obviously a health manager in, in terms of the New South Wales system. So a council wouldn't take a role, in my submission or in my view, in terms of, of health testing. I think that is a role for the state and it's not one that the council would move into. We would certainly advocate for it if it was found to be necessary and effective. I think the, what we're understanding, and this is unrolling for the whole community, this is longitudinal. This is a 70, 80 year process in which, you know, these, these water standards, Australian drinking water guidelines talk to. Simply not knowing whether this is a, a six month problem or a 15 year problem is really quite significant. I think, and I work closely with Water New South Wales and with Sydney Water and, and they're very good agencies to work with. So I'd, I'd say that as, at the outset, they are a positive agency to work with. But the shortfall here is that the, where you have a standard or a guideline, if you don't test to that standard, there is no point having the standard because simply we're dealing with ignorance. We don't know if we're, we're complying or not. And I think that's where council has emphasized in its submission, the need for that monitoring to be proactive. I think there's a catch up here required. If that, that monitoring had been placed, in place a longer period, we would have identified the contaminant source earlier. The fact that that hasn't occurred, I think is a stronger case to argue that there probably does need to be an intervention by the state government in terms of the health issue. And that, that'd be council's submission.
Mr Barrett.
You, you do touch in your submission about the lack of clarity about who has the, you know, who has the pen on this, who has the reins. In your eyes, and I can imagine the headaches that is causing, in your eyes, who should be the lead agency on this? And how important is it that someone actually stands up and says, yeah, we, we, we have control here?
Yeah, it's a really important point. I think the, what council looks for, and I've used the word urban governance, we can call it environmental governance, how do we work with government and stakeholders to achieve, you know, appropriate regulation in this space and a suitable outcome? The line of sight as we understand it is the Commonwealth is setting the standard by international best practice and we've seen the revision of the Australian Drinking Water Guidelines. As a point of concern, we then have a situation where the states or territories may and regulate largely up to the state and territories. So what is the standard? What is the expectation about the implementation of those guidelines? And there are many, many areas in, in our regulatory framework that, that the Commonwealth sets standards, EME for instance, in, in relation to mobile phone towers as an example. Then the states pick it up and, and take it through. I was working as the program leader of city planning during the late nineties when the Warrigamba incident occurred, it was serious. And there was a very rapid response. There's a rapid response in terms of the regulatory framework, it changed almost overnight. And we had the creation of the Sydney Catchment Authority. The importance of Warrigamba for a global city like Sydney is such that the, the safety and reliability of its water source is paramount. And so it would deserve a high level of regulation and a framework to deal with it. As we understand it, there are at least three agencies possibly four that are dealing with this issue. So we have the, the management of the storages, which is Water New South Wales, previously with Sydney Catchment Authority. And the dissolving of the Sydney Catchment Authority is interesting in this case because we, we have a, a water catchment issue and we have a framework that has been used previously. So I'll just park that there for a moment. Then we have the, the role of Sydney Water, we've got a New South Wales Health issue as well and possibly in Victoria, for instance, the EPA have a role. So at the moment, where you don't have a clear line of sight, it's fairly frustrating. And the problem for council and the problem for community is if I've got those guidelines all the way set by the Commonwealth, there should be a dashboard which is public, you know, publicly demonstrating the regular testing, reporting on that testing and that testing is clearly available to all stakeholders at all times. If there's a contaminant, a contamination issue, then that gets acted on and, and prioritized. So I think there have been actions, clearly strong actions, I think, by Water New South Wales and Sydney Water in terms of the infiltration issue, increasing the public testing and since June 2024, starting to see the reporting, the public reporting of levels. So that's all positive. It is difficult to see why you wouldn't have a lead agency for Sydney's drinking water. I don't understand how that would occur, given our learnings and our framework that we had in place from 1998, 99.
And I guess you have touched on this at a few different places and we heard this from Mr D as well, but, but what's lacking as far as the communication with the community? And what do you need, like, what do you need from the state government to, to give your community that assurance that other things are, at, at the very least, that things are moving in the right direction?
I think information's critical. So, so I think the moving towards the more sophisticated dashboard for water quality would be the first step. We've got some, you know, steps taken from, from June 24. So I think that availability of information, you know, demonstrating that, that contamination levels are suitable and acceptable would, would be useful. What I have found, I think council's found this as well in preparing its submission, the actual information on PFAS from the state government, from the agencies is actually quite limited. We actually need to look elsewhere, including to United States, including to, you know, specialist reports that are done. And I think there just needs to be a lot more information that, that is credible. The information I was concerned to hear from Sydney Water is that they are taking a risk based approach, a risk based approach to water monitoring. What does that mean? Does that mean if I don't know about it, I won't test? Risk based approaches do not have to mean proactive testing. So what I would suggest is every single requirement of the Australian Drinking Water Guidelines, as an example, every one of them would need to be tested proactively, not reactively, but proactively and reports provided in terms of assessment that are understandable to the community. I think that would assist, I think, just the, the information. The health information is similarly porous. I think we need to see more information. If a community is coming to council or to local members or to councillors saying, what is the likely long term impact? It's not, there's no clear answer there that council's been able to see. So I think at each one of those levels, when you're dealing with a, a concern to people's health, the normal response is not crisis communication, actually comes standard communication, open communication about the risks and possible remedies if that, if that's occurring.
I think there's also space to, the CRC for Water Sensitive Cities back in 2017 did research, national research into the water literacy of Australians. So the understanding of water catchment is where the water goes, when it rains, the connections between stormwater and water quality. And they found that Australians generally had quite a low level of water literacy. So taking it from an education perspective, there's definitely a space for more community education in that area so that people can understand when things go down the stormwater drains, they end up in our drinking water catchments.
We're hearing obviously lots- We're hearing obviously lots, more and more calls for increased testing. Are you concerned the burden of that will fall on you as a council? And where do you think that should sit?
No, the testing doesn't fall on council at all. So when we're dealing with the testing of water within, in our or special area water catchments, that's with New South Wales, Water New South Wales. What council did do in response to its community concerns, you can imagine there's a concern about drinking water. So then there was concerns about the water quality in Wentworth Falls Lake and in our other recreational water bodies and areas. So council commissioned testing within five days, had the results, which were positive, that there was no issue there. We were able to do that testing. I think that the elevated concern around PFAS in relation to drinking water definitely moves into some of council's areas. So, yeah, as I mentioned at the opening, we've got a very large area, around 50 square kilometres, that we manage, you know, along with the agencies. And so I think the community expectation around primary water contact areas will also increase. So it's only in that area. I want to be clear, council doesn't have a role in testing water quality for drinking water.
Thank you. I might just move to questions from government, and this is Mr Donnelly.
Just picking up on my point, and listen, on behalf of the community, thank you both for the important work that you do for the community. Just on page four of your submission, third last paragraph, and it's apropos the comments you just made, Mr. In terms of the council's aquatic scientists doing, you say one round of PFAS testing. Was that done in response to deferring to establish additional, in the current context of what's happening, additional information to inform council and its thinking? Or there are other reasons behind that testing?
It was primarily done in response to community concerns. As you can imagine, media has been very strong around this issue in the Blue Mountains, and we were getting a lot of concerns from people, particularly people who, for example, swim in Wentworth Falls Lake regularly. And we were getting phone calls from community members saying, there's foam in the lake, what is it, is it safe to swim? So.
But that, interesting, because it goes on to say in the second sentence that testing results show that PFAS is present at most sites, but at levels below the H M R C PFAS guidelines for recreational water quality.
Yeah, so it was really to reassure the community that there is, while we understand there is background levels of PFAS there, it's still safe to swim.
Just on that point, it's an important one. In terms of engaging with the community at large on a matter like this, has the council met challenges of the distinction between the water quality drinking matter and the more broader issue of recreational use? And how one clearly makes that distinction? And if I could sort of use that, I mean, it's my word, to provide a level of comfort and reassurance to the community? Is there a challenge there?
I think, no, it's a good point you've made, and I think, yes, there is a challenge there. So council, as the committee may be aware, we've been doing water monitoring testing in the Blue Mountains of our catchments for two decades, for 20 years.
It's a long time.
It's a long time. It's one of the longest of certainly any council in New South Wales. So that issue is around the environmental health of the catchment. Where we have issues, we do particularly focus testing where we have recreational water use in terms of water bodies. And so we've got a fairly strong basis in which to say to community, yeah, water quality's not always high, sometimes it's not, and we're quite transparent. We report to our community each year on that across the whole Blue Mountains. So with that framework in place, when those concerns were raised, it was a natural thing for us to do, to do additional testing and in relation to PFAS, in relation to the recreation areas. I'm not sure if other Sydney councils are testing their water bodies or their recreational water bodies for PFAS, and that might be an area to look at. And certainly council would then be guided by, you know, whatever sort of framework is in place for that.
And just to follow up, I presume, and once again, because that's the period of time as demonstrates the commitment to the point we're discussing here, that within the council, the aquatic scientists over this period of time must build some quite significant expertise and a database in various, oops, a database of records of their testing. Is that a fair comment?
Yes, we have, we recently developed a dashboard, a publicly accessible dashboard, which is now on council's website, and community members can go on and access that 20-something years of data from various sites across the Blue Mountains.
What's the feedback been like on that?
It's fairly new. Yeah, it's early days, yeah. We also publish a summary of our testing results every year in a printed brochure format and send that out to every rate payer once a year.
Thank you.
But to answer your question before, yes, it is, it can be, it is a challenge to communicate the difference between different types of water testing, because people hear water testing and they think you're testing for everything. But there's ecological, there's looking at the ecological health of waterways, that's one form of testing that we do. Then there's the recreational water quality, whether it's safe to swim, that's another form of testing that we do. But of course, these tests are different from whether something's safe to drink.
Yep, thank you.
Mr Moby.
Thanks, Jay. And I just wanted to follow up, really in the same vein, where I know there's an enormous amount of community concern about the safety of drinking water. But once the elevated levels of PFAS as a result of the Medlo Bath, potential contamination coming from that truck spill were identified, it's right that the catchment was immediately cut off, or that area was immediately cut off from the drinking water catchment. So in effect, that's protected the safety of that drinking water, and people shouldn't be alarmed about that, is that right?
Yeah, that's correct. So what we've acknowledged in the submission, and council acknowledges generally, that there are a number of steps taken by government at that time. So obviously, the almost immediate cutting of the Medlo Dam out of the sequencing in terms of water supply was necessary and prudent, and that occurred. I think that you've got two issues. One's a residual concern around PFAS in terms of the years that have passed and, you know, families who brought up children, et cetera, and asked the other question, how safe was drinking water? So there's that issue. And then you've got the immediate. And so with the immediate, no, with taking Medlo Dam, I'll call it offline, and then also the investment in filtration devices to monitor is important. And certainly the last step that we see a point of concern is very much isolating the work the government's doing currently, which is to identify the source of contamination and then, you know, remedy as possible. They're the required immediate steps, I would say, in terms of a crisis management response, and I think they're certainly underway.
Yeah, yeah, and it's an issue in relation to recreational use of those waterways and other uses. But just to be absolutely clear, there's no issue with the drinking water.
Yeah, to speak, that's correct, and I think the issue is also, these are special areas, so there's no public access to these waterways anyway. So, yeah, no, that, just to clarify that point.
I just, I guess the question comes in with the new draft National Health and Medical Research Council guidelines for PFAS in drinking water, which the levels are significantly lowered for PFAS. And since June last year, the levels at the Cascade filtration plant for PFOS have varied between two and four times the new proposed guideline. So that's obviously an issue that council is expecting.
Testing is ongoing, that will provide a greater picture and that sort of timeline of evidence that you talk about. So we can see whether, you know, is it environmental events, for example, high rainfall and other things that may cause elevated levels in the waterways from time to time? Or we just don't know until we have the data?
We don't know at this stage. We don't have that long-term data to tell us.
I think the issue, yeah, and there's always lessons learned out there. So going forward, I think the the regulation, I suggest the state government regulation around water testing and monitoring and ensuring that framework is in place is obviously critical in terms of that community. We don't want a situation, can't have a situation where we're saying, oh, we didn't know, and then that we have a contamination event. Now that we've got that, I think that going forward, there needs to be very regular monitoring required, not voluntary, but required testing to ensure that if there's any elevation like that in the water storages that is dealt with, along the lines you just suggested.
There's also a question around, obviously, the focus now is on PFAS, but there's a question around what other harmful chemicals are out there that we are not testing, that we're not currently testing for. And I bring up an example, we did, council did a 2017 assessment with the University of Melbourne, and we analysed creek sediment samples from 29 sites across nine Blue Mountain sub-catchments for a range of pesticides, heavy metals, and petroleum hydrocarbons. And we found that these contaminants are widely detected in our local streams at concentrations known to be toxic to aquatic life. This study included sites in the Kadumba, Lurra Falls, and Jamison catchments that feed into Sydney's drinking water supply at Warrigamba Dam. So that's, that's just an example of other chemicals that might be out there that we may not actually be testing for.
Fortunately, we might need to extend our terms of reference to look at heavy metals and other things, because in this committee, we're confined to PFAS, unfortunately. But thanks.
Thank you. I did just want to jump in and just get you to talk about the study that you have, the council has commissioned in consultation with, about platypus. So the three-year study, you mentioned the CSIRO research into turtles and turtle hatchlings, which found a significant effect on PFAS, on turtle hatchlings, which I think is interesting. We've got the CSIRO appearing before this committee on Wednesday. But if you could talk a little bit about what that means in terms of that research and why council thought it was so important to commission a study into platypus in the region?
Well, I guess it was starting with that 2017 study looking at the other pollutants that are going into waterways. And so we had this, it was really an opportunity to partner with the University of Western Sydney to look at the long-term impact on platypus populations in the Blue Mountains World Heritage Area. So a major driver for that, I guess, is our understanding of wherever you have directly connected impervious surfaces, so hard surfaces that are directly connected via traditional stormwater channels to creeks and waterways, you are going to have an impact. And that, and we know that that's an ongoing thing, and we also know that that's one of the number-one causes of damage to our local streams and waterways and a prime concern for our World Heritage Area. So that's, that's a driver of that, I guess, is that that knowledge of wherever you have that directly connected urban areas and streams and waterways, you are going to be getting issues. So we wanted to look at that.
Thank you. Just want to see if there's any other questions from members? No?
I can, but yours will be more.
No, no, you go, Mr Barrett.
Can you mention your, I'd like to know more about what you think the integrated water management system you talked about would look like?
I guess there's a case of, and you asked on your earlier question in terms of, you know, the responsible agencies. So I think it's fairly clear that both tiers of government have a role. So where we have standard setting on international best practice, the Commonwealth clearly have a role there. I think the, when we're drinking with drinking water catchments, I said that has primacy, because I think that's self-evident. So the question then becomes, where a Commonwealth or the Commonwealth government has a concern about water quality, of course it does. And so, you know, what is it able to regulate in terms of setting up an appropriate framework that the states and territories would follow? I was concerned to understand that there was actually limited guidance in that way, that very much the states and territories do as they see fit. So then I think the, where we have the standard setting, that framework is in place, and we've got the Australian Drinking Water guidelines in place. The word guidelines is a bit concerning. I would have thought the word standard would be what we'd call up in legislation to give it traction and give it application. It's very difficult for council or most stakeholders dealing with community to clarify or justify why we've got water not at the quality that the guidelines require. So I think that that's the first thing, that legislative requirement to manage water quality. I think the, there has in the past with Sydney Catchment Authority, as I mentioned, we worked very closely with that agency, it was highly resourced, highly expended a lot of original research coming from Sydney Catchment Authority. That were best practice in that space. I think what we expect from government is that when it comes to the application of water technologies and managing contaminants, managing catchments, et cetera, that Australia should really be leading in that work. And I think that if it's the state government leading that as opposed to Commonwealth, I think we need to see a lot of emphasis on information, which is clearly available to the public, but also determines what best practice looks like. That best practice framework then needs to be regulated. This is a space where we have regulated in the Blue Mountains since 1982 development in relation to water catch, as I mentioned at the beginning. And of course, there are other, you know, not just Blue Mountains, but other parts of Sydney that have that challenge. So I think it's then comes a case where that you have a lead agency sets best practice and regulates independently. We do have the double role between Water New South Wales and Sydney Water. I don't think that's unhealthy. I think that can be beneficial, there's a cross-check there because it's so important. So I think we need to look at how we, you know, really have that lead information research being done, best practice. Then we have, as Emma indicated earlier, it has to be for all of the guideline requirements and keep that up to date. So we make sure that emerging risks are identified at the earliest point. What we understand, it was the 1950s, we started talking about PFAS, 70s, we got a bit concerned, 90s, we started saying, no, we've got to regulate this. 2001, we had reliable testing methods available. And, you know, it was actually in 2024 that we landed, you know, the testing in Medlo Dam, that shouldn't happen. So we need to break down those, the transfer of information in a regulatory sense has to be in real time. So we end up with the best practice outcome. So I think it's a lead agency overall responsibility for drinking water catchments. When we deal with the World Heritage Area, which is also in that Sydney area, we are dealing with a global recognition of the importance of water quality going into the national park. So if there's ever a place where you're going to set up a lead agency dealing with water quality, World Heritage Area, global city, it would probably be in Sydney. And that would then filtrate out into the rest of the New South Wales system. I think the diffusion of Water New South Wales across the whole state, I don't think was effective as the Sydney Catchment Authority model. I think it was much more concentrated. And I think it was warranted. And then it's the information out to community.
And just finally, and quickly, are you worried that this whole issue is doing damage to your brand? The reputation?
I think it is, yeah. I mean, I think that, you know, we had concerns. The Blue Mountains deals with impacts on tourism, for instance, quite regularly. Bushfire is a classic case that we have to deal with, and, you know, I think that the brand will endure. But our brand is all about the quality of the environment, the integrity of our catchments, the World Heritage Area. It's about the natural environment of the lands of Darrigan Gungnirgara people. So that's, that's what we're about in the Blue Mountains. And I think if, I think there were very few stakeholders who weren't surprised and concerned to learn that there was possibly a water quality problem in the Blue Mountains. I think that is a brand problem.
But if you, I was just going to say, if you talk to the people on the ground at the visitor information centres and say, what do people come up to the Blue Mountains to see? What do they come here for? It's a clean, green environment, and they want to see waterfalls. Imagine how those people feel if those waterfalls they consider might be full of PFAS or other pollutants.
Also, the water testing that you've undertaken is just about recreational water quality guidelines, isn't it? It's not about the guidelines, which are less, I understand, for ecologically sensitive rivers. Is the council looking at conducting water tests for that? Because I think if, you know, as I understand it, are you aware of those guidelines, which are, which are much more strict than the recreational guidelines, I understand?
So we do the recreational water quality testing, and we also do ecological testing. So we do two different types of testing.
So the testing that you referred to in your submission, was that just the recreational water guidelines?
No.
I wonder if you could, would you be able to provide?
Yeah, I'll take that on notice.
And could you provide the committee with the results of both? Great, excellent, thank you. Just checking, I think that's our time. Thank you so much. Thanks for your evidence, your submission, which was very extensive and lots of really good recommendations in there. So we really appreciate it. Thank you. The committee will now break for morning tea. We'll be back in at 11:30. The committee will now break for morning tea. We'll be back in 11:30. If you're ready to kick off, so welcome to our next session. And we'll welcome our next witness, Assistant Commissioner Michael Morris. If you could please state your name and position title for the record and swear either an oath or affirmation, please.
So my name's Michael Morris. I'm the Assistant Commissioner for Metropolitan Operations with Fire and Rescue New South Wales. And I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thanks so much. Now, do you have a short opening statement for the committee?
Yes, I do, thanks, Chair. So I'd like to acknowledge the traditional custodians of the land on which we meet, the Darrig and Gundangarra people, and pay my respects to elders past and present. Fire and Rescue New South Wales recognises the concern around the impacts of PFAS and remains committed to a robust and integrated whole of government response to minimise community exposure and ensure the protection and safety of our New South Wales communities and firefighters. Fire Rescue New South Wales ceased using aqueous film-forming foam containing PFAS and PFOA as active ingredients in 2007 and does not use any firefighting foams containing PFAS. We continue to monitor and investigate the impacts of PFAS contamination in the environment and work closely with the Environmental Protection Agency to identify, assess and manage sites with legacy PFAS contamination. We are guided by the PFAS National Environmental Management Plan, the Australian Government Department of Health and the National Environmental Health Standing Committee's advice on PFAS and are committed to being informed by robust advice.
mid-1980s to 2007. This is along the Great Western Highway, is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
So, do you have the data there in terms of how many incidents involve firefighting foam?
We'd have to take on notice the total number of incidents involving foam. I do have the details regarding the two tanker fires that have obviously high profile and with the footage, et cetera, of foam being in use.
Okay, all right. Let's start with those then. So, the 1992 incident, do you have the detail in terms of how much foam was used?
So, for the 1992 incident, the incident report doesn't actually record the volume of foam used, but we can't deny that we used it. It's evident in the footage that's available from the time. The 2002 incident, we can, from the fire records, report that 240 litres of foam concentrate was used at that incident.
So that's 240 litres of the concentrate which is then diluted, isn't it, in what you're spraying onto the fire? That's then diluted?
That's correct, yes.
Yep. So that's a significant amount in 2002, was it?
That's the 2002 fire, yes.
Was there a particular time when it became mandatory to include in the incident report the quantity of firefighting foam being used? Or is it just that that was slipped up in 1992?
Those fields have been part of the incident reporting for quite a while and unfortunately, in the 1992 incident, that wasn't recorded in the fire report.
But it was probably mandatory at the time?
In terms of the fields, there's multiple fields and dropdown boxes and a reporting officer at the time goes through, fills that out, whether bio emission, whatever. That hasn't been recorded at that particular incident.
So there's no doubt, though, Assistant Commissioner, that there was a significant quantity of foam. You've seen, were you in attendance, by the way? I don't know your background or history.
No, no, I wasn't in attendance at either of those incidents, but I'm aware of obviously the details and have reviewed the records and the footage.
And have you spoken with firefighters who were present there? I understand potentially the current station master of Kootumbe, John Martin, was in attendance. Have you spoken with him about it?
I have seen a record of interview with Mr. Martin and his record of what occurred. He doesn't have much memory of the particular incident.
But, so the interview that you said that you've seen with Mr. Martin, does that interview talk about the firefighting foam used or just the scale of the accident?
So he doesn't recall the volumes of foam used. As I said, there's no denying that we used foam. I just can't give you an accurate figure on the volume that was used at the particular time.
And so you've seen the photos. From what you've seen, is it your view that a significant quantity of that foam did make its way into the local waterways?
It's undeniable that the foam that was used at that particular incident was closely adjacent to the water supply. And as we've seen, the location of that particular gully feeds directly into the Medlow Dam, so there's no question that that's current.
Okay. And just to be clear, this isn't a fault to lay fault, obviously, at the time. It was a significant accident. It was 1992 and, you know, the firefighters, you know, did what they could at the time to contain a very serious accident. But was there anything put in place to try and prevent the foam reaching the waterways or was that not really happening in 1992?
No, so there were still efforts underway. So at that particular incident, there was efforts to stop the dirt culvert that's adjacent to the highway to be dammed and trying to contain the runoff as best it can. And there's evidence that there was cleanup operations involving removing the contaminants from there, including the soil that was used to temporarily dam that. But obviously, there's the absorption of the materials into the surrounding earthways.
And is it your understanding, so this is one incident that's been identified in 1992, you said that there's been some research undertaken of all the incidents. Is it your understanding that there could have been quite a decent number of incidents along the Great Western Highway that did require firefighting foam containing PFAS to put them out?
As I said, we're working our way through that particular evidence. So we're with Water New South Wales, with all of the records and reviewing all of those to try and determine where the foam has been used in other locations. I would have to take on notice any details about the numbers or other particular incidents apart from the two that I'm referring to.
So did Sydney Water approach Fire and Rescue New South Wales to ask about what incidents have firefighting foam been used historically to determine contamination sites in the Blue Mountains? Because it was in June, of course, last year, where they say there are no known hotspots within the catchment. Did they communicate with you to determine that there were no known firefighting hotspots in the catchment, particularly in relation to traffic accidents on the highway where firefighting foam can flow into the rivers? Had they consulted with you about that?
I can't speak for the timeframe of June last year, but we've certainly been in contact with Water New South Wales and in consultation with them and, as I said, providing all the historical records to do that review of where contamination may have come from.
This is after the Sydney Morning Herald investigation that put it on the front page?
Correct.
I'll go to other members now and come back if I have further questions, but...
Um, sorry. Thank you. Should, thank you for coming. I was just wondering, do you think, should Fire and Rescue New South Wales be taking a more proactive role in monitoring and remediating where PFAS contamination has been linked to past incidents?
Yeah, as indicated, we are working with the EPA and Water New South Wales and a whole range of other government departments to look at that. We do have a significant body of ongoing work around the sites that we control and looking at all of those in terms of the remediation and prioritising those over a programme of works.
Excuse me. And just with regard to work health safety for the firefighters, and we did in the last hearing here from the Fire Brigade Employees Union, do you think that, so in, they identified that there were still sites, fire stations that stored PFAS chemicals. What has been done since then or to remediate or remove those chemicals?
Said in 2007, we withdrew all the PFAS foams. There's been a series of ongoing surveys and re-evaluation of that. Unfortunately, we have on occasion found stores of PFAS foam. As late as last year was another survey around that particular material. And to the best of our knowledge, we should have all of the PFAS-containing foams removed from the sites.
And they also said about blood testing and I think there was an announcement shortly afterwards to say that blood testing would be available. Can you just clarify that for me?
So that's part of the ongoing award requirements between the union and the department. And I'm not involved in those, but I understand that the procurement of the necessary service provision to get that testing done is underway. I don't have a timeframe about when that will start.
Just to be clear, in terms of blood testing, is it, what is being tested? Is this all PFAS within blood? Is that your understanding?
I would have to take on notice the detail of the testing, but in broad terms for PFAS in the bloodstream, yes.
Sorry, Mr. Barrett, you were about to-
Yeah, sure. Thanks so much for appearing. You talked about that ongoing work that's happening. What assistance have you asked for? What assistance do you need to, I guess, get that done as quickly as sort of public expectations are calling for?
Yep. Like everything, I guess it all comes down to funding and we're regularly making our case around the requirements that we need to progress that work. There are some limitations on the availability of specialists to assist in that work. So even if the magic bullet was delivered with a large volume of dollars, would still be a significant body of work to get all of the work done over time.
Have we lost anything as far as our firefighting capacity removing this product?
No. So we've replaced the PFAS-containing foams with other types of foam. From all reports, it works just as well as what we've previously had.
Can I call in on your expertise in this area? Some of the equipment that was used in those days when we were using PFAS sort of materials, is there a concern that there might be residue in those materials? And I'm thinking specifically, and it's probably an RFS question, old RFS trucks that were then on sale to the cockies that now use them as water trucks and those sort of products, is that a concern?
Sorry, I can't speak to RFS and the management of their fleet.
But just the general products that you might have had, old hoses, old trucks, old containers, that once upon a time would have stored this product, if they're still being used, is there a risk that there's residue in those products?
So they were cleaned through, but as we've heard, the chemicals remain. So there is always, I guess, that risk.
That's probably all I got at this stage.
Okay, I'll go to government members.
Just the figure, the 240 litres with respect to the 2002 incident on the highway, the Great Western Highway. Could you just explain, this is a commission, that's 240 litres of PFAS chemical? Or that's, could you please elucidate, I guess, what I'm saying, on what that 240 litre means?
That's 240 litres of foam concentrate that obviously has the PFAS as a component of that foam concentrate. And depending on the decisions operationally on the day, that would have been applied at anywhere between 1% and 6% solution to get the volumes of water and foam produced in the system.
So, I know this is looking back in the rearview mirror, but that's the way it was done then? The concentrate was carried or the concentrate was sought for the incident and then a decision was made operationally about? And was that mixed with water, is it how? What was the mixture?
That's correct. So the foam concentrates mixed with water to create the foam solution.
Do you mind if I jump in off the back of that question just briefly? You mentioned 6%. To be clear and just so I haven't misunderstood, the concentrate makes up 6% of the total solutions, 94% water?
Yes, so it's a-
Volume of material.
That's correct. So it's the ratio of foam to water solution that gets produced. And as I said, depending on its use, between 1 and 6%.
All right, thank you.
And that's for retarded use. Probably the higher percentage is because of a need for a stronger retardant on the fire, is that?
So in the case of these particular incidents, it's a running fuel fire. So the purpose of laying a foam blanket over the top of those is to stop the vapors being released from the hydrocarbons and create a barrier between the hydrocarbon and the heat source and the take-up of oxygen. So once that's smothered, we have control of that and then attempts to recover the product.
I just wanted to come back to this issue that you raised, which is that in a sense there's a bottleneck in cleaning up the residual PFAS that's there. And you're saying that even if you had the money, there just aren't sufficient experts who are properly trained to be able to do that work, is that right?
Yeah, that's my understanding, that there are constraints around the resourcing, yes.
Do you know how many there are? Like, how many experts are available or who are we competing with for those experts? Is it a matter of, you know, some of them are working on defence or other areas?
I would have to take that on notice. I know there was some commentary about that in the previous evidence, but I'm not familiar with the exact numbers of consultants in the area.
Sure. But that's really the, none of the problem, though, is that there's a bottleneck until we train people up who have the right skills in order to be able to do that clean-up safely. Is that right?
Yep, that's certainly my understanding, yes.
Okay, thanks.
I've got, just, thank you, Michael, just, and please, this is a technical question which may be on your specific knowledge, you'll be able to answer, and please feel free to do so, but you might have some valuable insight. So just in your submission, or the New South Wales Government's submission, on page number five, we just take you to that, because it's something that's been excised in my mind for a little while. It's the third paragraph specifically that I'd like to take you to, if I could, please. So we're dealing, well, perhaps if I let you read it, there's two sentences first, perhaps, that might be easier. So we've got this situation where the chemical PFAS and its other related chemical brothers and sisters, if I could use vernacular, which you understand could be up to 14,000, which is a very large number, quite obviously, is found quite widespread. And that's clearly understood. I'm trying to work out with respect to whether or not end up with sort of a double counting situation potentially, where there's a focus particularly here with respect to PFAS associated with the firefighting foam and the identification, particularly by Fire and Rescue and government agencies that may be assisting in regards to where specifically that would be associated with the component elements of the PFAS used at the time that may be in storage and whatever hasn't been disposed of. But when the work is done to look at these Fire and Rescue sites, is there, as part of that work, an attempt to understand, is there background components of PFAS which may be unrelated to the PFAS that was used? I mean, I know that sounds like an obscure question, but if it's background and it's everywhere, as often is asserted, is there potential for double counting or lapping over on your site? Or this is not a matter that's really-
I'm not familiar with the science to be able to provide an informed answer about those particular questions.
Okay. So it would be fair to say that the primary concentration is on where there's the firefighting PFAS, which has either been used in the past in storage or whatever the case might be.
Yeah, certainly the areas where we've had control of the property and we know the use and history of what we've done and then going through the evaluation and remediation processes to address where we've been a contributor.
And just following quickly, with respect to then the PFAS contaminations that's found on these sites, do you have any insights into how it got there? In this sense, was it training, work that was done using this? Perhaps was it surplus to use when they went to an incident and came back and they had some left and that was just, for example, thrown out? Now, we've got any insights into how it took place?
Yes. So as indicated in my opening statement, in some of the areas that we're responsible for, it's our training facilities, so regular use of those products. In others, it is related to bringing back material like the hoses, et cetera, that have been referred to and washing them down at the site. And in some circumstances, training at particular locations with small amounts of foam and in other locations around, as I mentioned, where we've had, you know, displays instead of where we've produced foam.
So there could be quite different variances potentially. I mean, they might be subsized with quite modest contamination, but obviously a training facility, one wouldn't be surprised.
Yeah, I think that's quite logical, yes.
Thank you.
So Assistant Commissioner, under the Protection of the Environment Operations Act, there's an exemption for the, from the PFAS firefighting foam regulation. I understand that individuals, businesses can apply for an exemption. Do you know whether any of the firefighting stations or there's been any exemptions applied for within the Blue Mountains area?
None to my knowledge. And as an organisation, we certainly don't, haven't applied for an exemption. My understanding of that is particularly around some of the major petrochemical facilities, et cetera, where it still remains the most effective product.
Yeah, I think New South Wales Ports has had one, I think, that's extended year upon year. With the extensive aerial fighting of fires that's been undertaken in the Blue Mountains area, is there, is there any kind of data in terms of incident logs that collates where the and where firefighting foam with PFAS has been used?
So the use of foams for aerial firefighting would be a matter for the RFS and I wouldn't have the content knowledge to comment on it.
So, just to be clear, so any aerial spraying of firefighting foam is through the RFS and you don't have that data? Fire and Rescue New South Wales don't have that, doesn't have that data?
That's correct.
You don't know whether that's collected?
As I said, I can't speak to the RFS operations on the data that they collect.
Is that, who actually overall then has responsibility for the fact that these are, you know, toxic chemicals that are being used to fight fires? The community, government agencies surely should be collecting this and knowing what's being sprayed out there. So if Fire and Rescue doesn't know, do you think the EPA would hold that?
As I said, we are working with the EPA and a range of other government departments around the coordination of those issues. It's just not a personal knowledge matter that I can speak to on behalf of the RFS.
So what you've given to the EPA, what Fire and Rescue has been asked to give to the EPA on this matter is you're looking at the traffic incidents where you have sprayed firefighting foam- you're looking at the traffic incidents where you have sprayed firefighting foam historically. Have they asked for anything else? I know there's the contaminated sites. Is there anything else that we need to be aware of or that's missing here?
So there's ongoing consultation with Water New South Wales. And as we work through the data, there's requests for more data. So that's an ongoing process of consultation to look at the historic records and expand or contract or hone in on particular searches as required.
Okay. Did you have other questions?
So you just added that one. So if there's a, do you have, or to your knowledge, is there a system in place where you have that data, say from historical fire events? So that when another agency says, oh, you know, are you able to easily access that information or data?
I wouldn't say easily access, but we do have the fire reports that were produced at the time, paper record occurrence books from the stations at the time. And at a point in history, we transitioned from paper-based records to electronic ones. So where the electronic records exist, obviously much easier to search. But that's an ongoing process of, depending on what's required at any particular time, to look through the historic records.
So I suppose there's a gap in that, in that record, sort of keeping in, you know, where it was paper and now it's electronic. So the electronic versions are easily accessible, but the paper ones?
Are stored in accordance with the records requirements of the government and retrievable as required. Just obviously becomes a different level of resource intensity for those searches compared to electronic searches.
And with today's firefighters, how is Fire Rescue New South Wales ensuring that they're not exposed to legacy contamination issues? At, like, there's Medlo Bath, but there are other sites. So how are you ensuring that, you know, they're not exposed to those sites?
So we have a number of processes in place and work directions around the land use. So for our sites, particularly around not growing anything in the soils around the station, not keeping chickens on site, all of those sorts of things that limit any of that sort of exposure. The reality for most of our stations is that they are hard surface concrete areas, so there's limited exposure to the soils. And then, as I said, we have a body of work assessing all of our sites and undertaking remediation work on a prioritised basis.
And just for the firefighters that attended in 1992, are you aware if any of those firefighters have been later diagnosed with health conditions that could be as a result of PFAS contamination or, sorry, not PFAS exposure?
I couldn't speak to the individuals and their medical histories, no.
No, okay. So you haven't had any... And none of those have had blood testing as yet?
No, so the blood testing regime in accordance with the award hasn't commenced yet.
It's only if they've done it individually themselves.
That's correct.
So what happens when a firefighter comes? Do they go to management within Fire and Rescue if they do have concerns about fighting fire historically with this foam, with PFAS, which the World Health Organisation has deemed as carcinogenic? What happens, possibly carcinogenic, what happens when they say that they have high cholesterol, that they have cancer? Firstly, what does Fire and Rescue do? And secondly, what data is being kept on this? And is it, is it public, even if it's de-identified, of course, which it would need to be? What does that look like in terms of the regime of keeping track of the health impacts across the force?
Some of those elements I'd have to take on notice. As I said, there is the award provisions around the establishment of the testing regime. And as you've heard previously, there is presumptive legislation for firefighters around a number of cancers. And historically, we've relied, as I said, on the medical advice around the testing regimes and whether it was appropriate or not. And as the science has grown, so too has the knowledge and that's been moved through. And now we're in this position where we have the award provision and the undertaking the preparations to commence the testing, blood testing for PFAS of our firefighters.
Could you just expand when you said relying on the medical advice in relation to the testing regimes? What does that mean? What did that mean five years ago, for example, when you say you've been relying on the medical advice? Which medical advice? Who from?
So in terms of PFAS and the cancer risk and the medical advice, we follow the Federal Department of Health Advice Regarding PFAS, which recommends adopting a precautionary approach and that human exposure to PFAS be minimised. And we have adopted this precautionary approach in managing it across the state. The health advice was that PFAS exposure has been associated with a number of health effects and that there are potential associations with two types of cancer. Though a causative relationship between those health effects and PFAS exposure has not been established to date.
Assistant Commissioner, what you're reading out is not advice for people who were fighting and working with the foam, fighting incidents, working with this toxic cancer-causing foam on a weekly basis. What you're reading out is not for firefighters. So are you seriously saying here today that Fire and Rescue never had separate advice in terms of what they should be doing for people working with the chemical that was phased out in 2007 because it was potentially cancerous?
Yep. As I said, there is ongoing negotiations with our union and it is part of the current award to implement those testings. And prior, the New South Wales Health Advice suggested that blood testing had no current value in informing clinical management of people with potential exposure to PFAS.
I've just been to the USA, like on a study tour of PFAS. And I tell you what, the firefighting, the firefighters' union there is absolutely all over this. And they have, you know, worked out to get testing years ago, years ago. It just beggars belief that Fire and Rescue New South Wales did not know this was happening in other jurisdictions. Did you have firefighters coming to you, begging you to test their blood to see what was happening with PFAS chemicals? I bet you had a lot.
I would have to take that on notice.
Any other questions?
How, like, how big is the resource you are putting into dealing with this general issue? Have you got staff allocated specifically to this?
So in terms of the site remediations, et cetera, we have a PFAS team of two people who are working on the project management and working with the other government agencies around the coordination of all of that cleanup particular activity. And then obviously we've got a health and safety branch who's been involved in establishing the requirements to initiate the testing regimes as per the award requirements.
We've heard in other evidence that there has been some confusion or things could be streamlined a little easier if it was known, if one person sort of had control over this whole issue. Would you concur with that?
I guess we'll work with the rest of the government and all of the relevant agencies in terms of that coordination and do what we can within our remit.
Someone, last question from me, I think, but you just referred to the National Health and Medical Research Council guidelines in terms of dealing with PFAS. So is there anything stronger now that the, that Fire and Rescue New South Wales is looking at in terms of assessing what the ongoing impact to workers would be who have fought with this and worked with it, as on training days? People talk about how it was all over their uniforms on these particular days, not to mention the community that was also in this foam. What has Fire and Rescue New South Wales done to research now the extent of the potential contamination and what that means for the health of firefighters? Because the National Health and Medical Research Council advice that you referred to, Assistant Commissioner, is not for firefighters that worked with it daily. You're aware of that firstly?
I'd have to take that on notice.
So are you aware, you quoted it, you've got it in your book there, that that's just for kind of everyday Australians who occasionally, well, it's more than occasionally actually, but consume, you know, food, water, that's a drinking water guidelines. It's not for people who work with the substance as firefighters. Are you aware of that?
In terms of the current state of research in Fire and Rescue New South Wales, I'd have to take that on notice.
The document that you quoted, the National Health and Medical Research Council, in your folder that you, someone prepared for you?
I think the witness, Zindacati, is going to take it on notice.
I'm just asking him whether he is aware in terms of the national, in terms of that NHMRC document, whether it specifically deals with firefighters, the part that you quoted.
As I said, I'll take on notice the question around that particular element.
If you could also take on notice then please, what Fire and Rescue rely upon? The research that you're currently relying upon in terms of the potential health impacts of firefighting foam containing PFAS chemicals, that would be extremely helpful for the committee.
Certainly, Chair.
Thank you. Any other questions for this witness?
Not for me.
Okay, all right. Thank you so much, Assistant Commissioner, for making yourself available. Obviously, the secretary will be in touch for anything you've agreed to take on notice.
Yep.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Assistant.
Okay, we'll start the next session. So welcome to our next witness. I understand Ms Gem Green will join us online shortly. So Mrs Ritalik will get you to swear yourself in. If you could state your name and position, title, please, and either swear an oath or affirmation.
Thank you. Frances Ritalik, Vice Chair of the Cadia Community Sustainability Network. I am swearing the oath. I swear that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
Thank you very much. And we're still waiting for Ms Green to come on board, so I think you've got an opening statement for us, Mrs Ritalik. Please proceed.
Good morning. Thank you for the opportunity to share our experience. Cadia Community Sustainability Network was established by community members in the Cadia Valley District to work with Newcrest, now Newmont, to safeguard for all the economic, social and environmental future of our region. In 2023, CCSN attended the parliamentary inquiry, current and potential impacts of gold, silver, lead and zinc mining on human health, land, air and water quality in New South Wales. We did not expect to be attending another inquiry so soon. In May 2024, we discovered that ponds adjacent to the Belubula River on farms immediately south of Cadia Valley Operation Tailing Stans were heavily contaminated with a cocktail of PFAS, hydrocarbons and heavy metals. And I have here, that's, if you've seen the movie Dark Waters, this is my farm last winter and it was like this for months. This is my neighbour's farm at the same time. That foam is half a metre deep and that's a known platypus hole. This discovery led to a programme of monitoring and testing in our district with help from Associate Professor Dr Ian Wright. In July 2024, the community identified significant banks of foam accumulating on the Belubula and some of our creeks. Testing the foam revealed it was hyper-accumulating contaminants. CCSN believes the deposition of this highly concentrated contaminated foam along the riverbanks represents a significant risk to the livestock industry in our district. And just by illustration, this is what it, it runs down the river. It accumulates along the edge and we end up with what we called the white stripe, quite clearly defined in a localised area on the Belubula and down to certain creeks. And you could drive around and see, oh, the foam's been here, it's not been there. It was very specific. The EPA also commenced a testing programme focused on sampling the river for PFAS at a number of locations in our district. The EPA has identified PFOS concentrations in the river at between 0.014 to 0.23 micrograms per litre. EPA Victoria has determined that sites with mean livestock drinking water concentrations as low as 0.003 micrograms per litre may result in exceeding the European Community maximum limit for PFOS in cattle meat. Our district is primarily cattle grazing country, has PFOS in the drinking water at up to 1,000 times the lifetime exposure limit required to meet EU export standards. As a result of the concerns raised by the community, the EPA has made a number of changes to Cadia's environmental protection licence, including a requirement to produce a report investigating potential sources of PFAS at Cadia by the end of September 2025. That's nine months to write a report about where they might have used PFOS. By the time this report is produced, almost 18 months will have passed since the farmers in our district identified a problem. In the meantime, our cattle drink from a contaminated river with a glacial pace of investigation putting at risk Australia's beef export industry. The risks of PFAS contamination have been recognised overseas for decades. Why has there been no general monitoring of our rivers and waterways? We've heard today the discovery of this contamination has been the result of some non-experts happening to test something that they didn't understand. I've repeatedly been told, I tested the foam on the Belubula. I was told by Professor Wright, why did you do that? Nobody tests foam. I was told by the EPA, oh, it'll be surfactants. Don't worry about it. Why does it come as a surprise when we discover quite by chance that our rivers providing drinking water for people and livestock are contaminated? The EPA is now conducting a more extensive round of testing. However, this programme makes a simple comparison of the amount of PFAS per litre without considering the volume of flow in each watercourse. That's the Belubula. They are comparing the amount per litre in the Belubula to the amount per litre in Cowriga Creek. No comparison of the volume of water flow. The EPA does not consider the cocktail of contaminants found in our water. We believe the cocktail of contaminants provides a signature for a source. The EPA has not considered testing protocols for elements such as diesel which float on the surface. Department of Planning has told us there are protocols for testing for diesel that's on the surface. It's not been done by the EPA. The EPA did not consider the impact of fault lines and alluvial channels identified by the Independent Expert Scientific Committee. There were two papers produced by the Independent Expert Scientific Committee, one for Paul Scully, one for Tanya Plibasek, 2023 and 2024, both of which draw the conclusions that contamination from the tailings dams will seep into the groundwater, will seep into the creeks and waterways and surprisingly will flow downhill to the river. In the metals mining inquiry of 2023, many of the recommendations put forward were not adopted by the committee. However, sadly, most of them remain relevant today and are relevant to many industries. Once again, CCSN suggests that reports on all aspects of operations should be produced by independent experts selected by a panel managed by the appropriate regulatory agency. Buffer zones must be appropriate. Cadia's buffer zones have not changed since the original licence 25 years ago, yet production is five times greater. There must be full and prompt enforcement of all regulations with significant fines. In addition, relevant to today, we strongly recommend the system of self-measurement, self-monitoring, and reporting must stop. The system is being abused. Enforcement of environmental regulation should not and must not be open to political pressure and interference. The very survival of our agricultural industry depends upon our regulators being allowed to enforce regulation without pressure from political parties and industry lobbyists. We ask that regulators apply the regulations in a clear and transparent manner. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mrs Ritalik. We're just seeing if we can get Ms Green on, who's having internet issues. But we'll just go straight to questions. I just wanted to get a sense of, so the water in the Belubula River around where you tested all this really shocking pitches of foam, you know, one of which I think you said the foam is half a metre deep. So cattle, so livestock, drink out of that river. You said something about families as well. Is that water pumped and used for irrigation? What's the... Talk to us about the uses of that water.
So farmers in the district have basically an entitlement for livestock and domestic use. There are many farms in the district that would pump out and use it for drinking water. There are also farms in the district where they top up their water tanks from the aquifers, assuming, because we tested it 20 years ago, it's okay. It's widely recognised that cattle in particular do best, and you are most productive and most profitable if they have a very good supply of fresh water. Many farms in the district have troughed their properties entirely off the river, only to discover now that the river is contaminated. And to be clear, it's not just PFOS. This is a regulated river. It's described by New South Wales Fisheries as being endangered, an ecological, critically endangered ecological habitat in danger of extinction. We have Murray... We have huge Murray cod in the river, but it is on the precipice. And it's gone from being what should be 99% species survival under the aquatic standards to now not being suitable for livestock.
Okay. Have advisories been issued to people in the area?
No.
No advisories have been issued from the EPA and New South Wales Health?
No.
So cattle are potentially drinking the water and still being sold, I assume?
Sorry, I should also tell you that we tested... Our experience at CCSN has been problematic with the regulators in terms of the lack of regulation in our district. And I think that's quite well documented. One of our philosophies has been to get ahead on data. We tested carp. The carp in the river are heavily contaminated with PFOS and copper. New South Wales Fisheries was sent out to our property two weeks ago by the EPA. They'd been asked to collect 40 cod and 40 carp. They arranged to go to three different properties because they didn't think they would get that number of cod in one place. Sorry, 20 cod, 20 carp. They came to our property, Millamalong, and they collected the 20 cod from one hole. They were thrilled that we had managed to preserve this environment to such an extent that we'd been able to breed the numbers up. They will be contaminated. There is no question. I believe the focus of the EPA's testing, when you ignore the volume of water in the river, the only conclusion you can actually come to and be reaching is how contaminated the fish, how much fish can you eat? You're not actually reaching... You're not going to be able to reach a conclusion as to a source. You might find multiple sources, but you're not going to be able to find the solution to my problem or a specific problem along the river. And if you don't find a solution and a source accurately, you can't solve the problem.
Just come back to that in a second, but I think we've got... We weren't able to get Ms Green on the webex, but we have her on the phone, I think. Ms Green, can you hear me?
Good afternoon, Kate. My sincere apologies, of course. This all worked perfectly last week with the Secretariat.
So is the way. We'll just get you sworn in firstly, if you could. Have you got your statement in front of you? If you could state...
I do indeed. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Chair, I'll be making an affirmation today. I solemnly, sincerely, and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Thank you. Just your name and position, title as well?
Yes, Gem Green, Chair of the Cadia Community Sustainability Network.
Okay, wonderful. Okay, so you could hear that Frances was just talking. Then we'll just keep going to questions.
Thank you.
Okay, all right. So with the carp that you said that you tested, and it had high levels of PFAS in it, what have you done with that data? Have you given it to any government agency?
We passed it on to DPE and the EPA. The EPA then organised for New South Wales Fisheries to come and collect fish, and they're doing a similar testing programme, testing cod and carp.
Have any signs been established, like along the river, any notifications, advisories to the community to not fish or be cautious about eating it?
We have repeatedly suggested to the local council and to the EPA that Bakershaft is a public reserve upstream from where our property is. It's a very, very popular camping and fishing reserve. The council has been advertising it as a tourist attraction, go there and go gold panning. The last time we were there collecting samples with Ian Wright, I think it was back in September, school holidays, there were families there playing in the mud panning for gold. The mud is... The most toxic mud in our district is at Bakershaft. Sorry, I'll give you some numbers. Bakershaft PFOS last September, 1,500,000 parts per trillion of PFOS in the sediment. That's 50,000 times greater than the PFOS in the river at the same site at the same time. It is accumulating.
Where was the sediment taken from? When you said the sediment, was that like in...
From the edge of the riverbank.
Really?
This was by Dr Wright. I just sort of drive along. The river water was 30 parts per trillion. PFOS in the foam was more than 16,000 times the safe ecosystem guidelines. That was on the 21st of September 2024. I was alarmed to hear the Blue Mountains Council saying, they get phone calls saying, can we go swimming when there's foam on the river? My kid will not be... Would not be going swimming where there is foam, because the foam is, in our experience, the foam is an accumulator. We have colossal heavy metals, hydrocarbons, and PFOS in the foam. The EPA tried to tell us that the foam could... And I got the same message from the Blue Mountains Council. Oh, it could be surfactants. When we went through the Standing Order 52 documents that your department got, having been told for months that the surfactants are natural, there is a... One of the science departments has provided the EPA with an email saying this is not a natural source of surfactants.
Thank you. I've got many more questions, but I'll go to other members. So who've got for the opposition, Mrs McDonald?
Thank you. And I'm not sure who to put the question to, but in the submission you raise concerns with how the EPA are taking water samples from the middle of the river, approximately 30... Sorry, 15 to 30 centimetres below the surface. Can you outline to the committee why this is a concern to you, and if this practice differs from any New South Wales or national standard?
I'm not an expert to have an opinion about the standards, but what I do, what I do, if I'm getting samples for myself to go and see what's happening, I choose the same spot every time. I try to get it in a quiet spot. Where are my cattle drinking? They aren't drinking in the middle of the river, they're drinking on the edge of the river. That said, the EPA consistently samples in the middle of the river in the flow of water. Their PFOS exceedances, which are just colossal, are in the middle of the river. That system will pick up, I believe, what is dissolved in the water. It will not pick up, I don't think, diesel. And so I have...
Yeah, you said that.
That's pond... That's a... All of us can see that's heavily contaminated. That's a pond on my property. The property's running on either side of us. And we're quite large farms in this strip of the river. All have diesel in the ponds. The river fills up when we get a lot of rain and then breaks into a permanent channel and then a series of ponds. And the ponds, as the water settles and stops, develop a film on top. The EPA, the first time they came out, I said to them, can you test this? Oh, no, it won't be anything. This is how you check for diesel quickly. Throw a stone in. If the water goes back together, it's diesel. Well, sure enough, it goes back together. That foam blanket I showed you that's half a metre thick, we threw a massive rock into it and it goes back together like... It's like some sort of creature from outer space. It was quite a shock the first time we saw it. But it's diesel.
And so the way the EPA...
They won't find diesel. They're testing running water. You don't find diesel and it's on the surface.
But they would test to a standard?
I guess. Yeah.
And so you said also in your submission that you think that PFAS contamination has made its way into the Cadia from sources like Orange and the Blaney wastewater treatment plants?
Yep.
Going back as early as 1998. Where have you got those records? And have you provided that information to EPA?
Yes. The first report the EPA put out when they tested the river, they omitted Cadia, Orange wastewater treatment, and the de-watering plants in Blaney for Cadia as potential sources of PFOS. But Cadia has been taking all of the treated... Most of it. Most of the treated wastewater from Orange, which is contaminated, all of the biosolids from Orange since 1998. They've been stockpiling it. They've also been using PFOS in firefighting foam. They have on average a fire every six weeks underground based upon resource regulator documents. So there's PFOS on the site, and there might be other sources as well.
So did you commission these testings or the data or evidence?
This started because we had ponds that looked like that, and I wanted to know what it was. And I thought, well, I'll test for something anthropogenic. And so we got sample bottles and tested for PFOS. I never expected to find PFOS, not in a million years, but let's test for that. Let's test for hydrocarbons, see what that comes up with. Let's test for the metals. And that's where this all started. And about the same time, Ian Wright's student was writing up about PFOS in platypus.
And so he's been testing as well?
We know Ian Wright from doing some water tank testing over the last couple of years for us. And I sent him our results. One Friday night, I'd got the results back late and I just sent them through to him. And we had a very long conversation. He was blown away. And it's... Sorry, it's the realisation of the impact. Well, it has evolved. You find out you've got a problem, and then the cogs start to turn, and you start to realise, this is... These are the ramifications. And then you find the Victorian EPA paper saying, this is how low PFOS needs to be in the drinking water for cattle, and you realise you and all your neighbours are cattle businesses.
Yeah. I'm conscious of that.
Yeah. Mr Barrett, do you?
You've touched a bit on your engagement with EPA. What other government agencies have you dealt with through this?
Planning.
And a similar experience to them. I'm leading to a question saying, what do you think these agencies could be doing better as far as their outreach and engagement with organisations and community on this issue?
What I find very different, so I'll say one thing, and then Gemma might want to chip in. The EPA updated the EPL last year. They approached the community and asked if we would like to comment on it. I think we had 90 submissions. We have about 500 members. That's a pretty good hit rate. The new EPL was published on the 23rd of December around about four o'clock. In that EPL, they ask Cadia to produce a report, basically an audit of all your possible sources of PFOS, and you've got nine months to do it. Now, Department of Planning, they come out with their changes for every modification the mine puts in. They've just spent a year going over a modification. When they ask them to do a report, they give them three months, and then they start knocking on the door, where is it? Where is it? Where is it? I guess people have different experiences. I find that we have achieved, as a community group, substantial change, I believe, in the operation and what will be the health outcome for the long term for the community through the Department of Planning as opposed to through the EPA.
You've spoken a lot about the impact on the cattle industry. Any engagement with government on that regard?
No, not at this time. One of my neighbours is a very highly respected person in the cattle industry. He's had a lot of discussions with meat and livestock, et cetera, et cetera. He is part of a... There is a research project going on between, I think it's University of South Australia and UQ on PFAS contamination in grazing animals in cattle industry, and looking at, particularly looking at where biosolids have been spread.
Have you passed on for now?
And I just want to check at this point whether, Ms Green, whether you have anything to add to any of the questions at this point?
Thanks, Chair. Look, the only thing I would like to say is just the stress, the strain, the mental impacts, mental health impacts on what the CCSN has established in the last eight months has been... It's been very, very hard for the community. We're seeking for answers. We're spending a lot of money on testing because we've found an issue. And yeah, that's been a really big challenge of how we all look after ourselves and each other as we progress through this further issue of contamination in our community.
Thank you. Just before I go to government members, I did just want to ask, I was going to ask this question later, but about the testing and the kind of personal resources that you've put into it, how much have you spent, the community spent on these tests?
I'd like to take that on notice, Chair, to be clear, but it would be in excess of $30,000, is my recollection, Frances. Would you add to that?
Yes, it's over $30,000. It's over $30,000. Well over. We have testing labs that are now saying... So for example, EnviroLab, we want to test the carp, and they phoned us and said, we'll do it for free, because they know we've got a problem. They phoned us up and talked to us about a presentation the EPA gave about our water tank testing. I said, you should be aware, this is what is being said, because they knew what our water tanks looked like, and they know that our water tanks aren't normal.
Questions from government members, Mr Donlin?
Thanks very much. Could you just return to the matter of the contamination of meat and... Could you just return to the matter of the contamination of meat and livestock? I'm just looking at page four of your submission, if I can, please take you to that. And specifically, I'm looking at the penultimate paragraph on that page and the one above it. With respect to guidance or regulation around contaminants in meat, including PFAS, is it, you're understanding that there is no provisions in regard to that with respect to New South Wales currently?
Yes.
There's not?
But it's coming and we all have to sign quality assurance documents when we, every time you send livestock to market.
Sorry, just, sorry to interrupt, when you say it's coming, what's coming?
You will be required to report whether or not your livestock have been, have been exposed to PFOS. But my understanding that is coming this year, is that right, Mike?
Hang on, sorry, it's got to be through you, Frances.
No, my understanding is that that requirement on the documentation will be changing this year.
Right.
But the problem is.
Just to be clear, that's a bio solids review?
No, 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 that's a requirement for quality assurance for meat sales. The problem is if you are selling into the European markets, so my neighbour is EU accredited. He sells, he has the ability to sell into the European market, the buyers all know he's EU accredited. So he needs to be able to tick the box saying, I'm okay. And he's already been told he's got a black flag against his name, that he may not be okay.
So who's placed the black flag on him?
The buyers, because this, the PFOS map is out there. And the buyer, and there's also, he's got a requirement coming, I think from Meat and Livestock, Meat and Livestock Australia, EU accreditation will have to put in your postcode. So we all happen to be next door to a known contamination site.
You're part of this as well?
I don't know, I'm sorry, I just a little bit confused because with respect to the earlier evidence, I think included in your opening statement, you referred to the Victorian standard, I think that's the phrase you used. But, and I'm not being critical here, but I'm just trying to seek clarity. It isn't a Victorian standard, what it is, it's an actual, and I accept an article by a person whose title Professor Mark Patrick Taylor at L.
It's not, yeah, EPA Victoria has determined, sorry, it was a research paper, it's not a standard. It's a research paper where they worked out, effectively they worked backwards and said, in order for, given how much cattle drink, given all of these locations we've tested, how much PFOS can be in the drinking water before, in a lifetime exposure, the cattle no longer meet the EU standard. It's the European standard that they were, they were working backwards to work out, how do you satisfy the European standard? And they came up with this incredibly low level of PFOS and.
Well, the researcher did, that's what you're saying.
Yes.
Yep. And there's no equivalent standard in New South Wales that currently exists?
No.
No. And just to follow on that, so this prospective Commonwealth standard, that's cutting, is it? Is that what you?
There's a prospective requirement to disclose if your cattle have been, or if your livestock has been exposed to PFOS. So at the moment, we have to tick, for example, they've not been exposed to batteries. You haven't stored old lead batteries and they've licked those and et cetera. And we have to tick the box and say, no, no exposure to any of those elements. And they're going, we're going to be required to say the same about PFOS. And the problem is it's in the river.
When you say no exposure, is there a threshold above which or below which PFOS?
I don't know what the document will say. The stand, what we tick at the moment is yes, no.
Yeah, I just, I mean, you may not have the knowledge of this, but this is part of the challenge that there is an argument, there is no safe standard, full stop, because it's referred to the forever chemical and we sort of understand those arguments that are running in the public domain. But then you've got the, dare I say, the scientific regulatory bodies, which talk about a standard or a minimum of exposure. Now, I accept that that may vary across jurisdictions. But when you make a blanket statement that the EU have put the black flag up, I'm just wondering.
No, the Australian buyers. So the local buyers, so the way it works, the industry buyers go around all of the sale yards and they've got their orders to fill. And they tend to know, you know, so the Wongalong cattle are like this. Over time, they know what they're buying, what the quality is, what they expect. And they know that this property is cleared to sell through to the EU and I've got an order from the EU. And all of a sudden, this property may not be cleared to sell to the EU. And we talked a little bit earlier on, it's the taint in your tourism, it's a taint on your meat business. But the real risk, the real concern I have is if we don't get on top of this in some way, it's, I don't believe PFOS is everywhere yet. It isn't in the streams that we have that flow from the south to the river.
Well, if we, sorry to interrupt, but if we believe to, if we are to believe what is said quite openly by many people who feel strongly about this matter, it's argued that it's everywhere, that it's manifestly everywhere. So this is part of the challenge that we're facing with this inquiry. There is the statements made making, dare I say, a claim or an argument and lying that up against others who have different views about, in an absolute sense, they're far apart through to those who say, listen, we agree in principle, but we're going to talk about the margins or the difference. Do you understand what I'm saying?
Yeah, I do. But I know it's not in the creeks that we have flowing from the southern side of the river to the river. It's in the river. And the problem if you're a livestock producer, and maybe sadly in 20 or 30 years, it will be everywhere if we don't get on top of things now. And that's, that's the opportunity is to try to perhaps do things differently. And to, you know, clean up after ourselves, protect the water, protect the water for the future for everybody.
Minister Donnelly, if I could just add to what Frances has shared, we'd appreciate taking on notice, the seeking of information from, I think it's Safe Meat Australia in relation to, you know, any form of drafts that they may have currently available for producers to share with the committee.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs McDonald again for questions?
I'm not sure who to direct, so I'll just put it out in the open. So with the international studies that link PFAS exposure to serious health conditions, to your knowledge, has New South Wales Health offered any form of blood testing or health assessments in the area?
One of the things I have found really remarkable today was to hear that New South Wales hasn't tested, been testing the firefighters, that they've refused the Blue Mountains residents for blood tests. New South Wales Health banned our district from getting blood tests for heavy metal contamination. Because of the metal contamination in our drinking water tanks, we went privately and did it ourselves and that caused a bit of a furor. But no, to my knowledge, I'm amazed by the decisions that seem to be made based upon no information.
So that would bring me to my next question with regard to, say, are residents and producers facing additional costs due to contamination concerns? Like are they buying bottled water or medical expenses or, you know, in accreditation for EU? Are there additional costs in doing all of this?
Yes, and the EPA, Steve Beeman stood in my kitchen and basically said that we could mitigate the PFOS problem by providing our cattle with alternative water and feed sources, which is putting the whole cost on to the farmer. But we didn't cause the problem. And we're already in our district, many people are buying water or, we have water provided by the mine. The mine is subsidising some people with filtration on their drinking water tanks. We've already got additional costs. But I am, I am very concerned about, A, the practicality and even the possibility to provide alternate clean water for cattle. Cattle will drink 100, 150 litres a day. It's not a practical option to say, oh, you can't use the river, go and get it from somewhere else.
And so you said with regards to, so you have community-led efforts in that you're doing testing, independent testing, are they, do you know, to your knowledge, are they through the same channels that, say, EPA are testing or?
You mean the same labs?
But they are accredited or?
Oh yeah, they're accredited, yes, 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 they're accredited.
They're accredited, correct.
We either go to ALS or EnviroLab, but they are accredited.
So what message would you have for policymakers and regulators who are responsible for addressing PFAS contamination in New South Wales?
Act now before it's too late and don't give up. We need to, sorry, we need to all change and we need to hold the polluters to account.
Mrs Ratale, do you have any opinion about the role that the EPA has played in all this? Do you think that they are doing the job that they should be doing?
We as a group often use the phrase, they're either complicit or incompetent. And a lot of their science, so-called, it's been described to me by somebody as a pseudoscience, their so-called scientific reports are extraordinarily flawed. In going through the Standing Order 52 documents last week, we sent in, just by way of example, they did some work on our water tank contamination, we sent in a rebuttal document. They sent parts of that to expert scientists who then came back to them and said, well, actually the community's right about that point, you're wrong. That conclusions have been drawn that should not have been drawn based upon inaccurate information. And it's a pattern.
Do you think that sometimes it looks like that might be kind of working to protect the polluter over the public?
Yes.
I think political interference is a very big issue, Kate, in a lot of these approvals and state significant developments. I think there's huge potential there. And if I could just add, in addition to Frances's comments from the group's perspective on the EPA, we've often found it to be very underwhelming and reactive in nature, not proactive for the community and the environment.
Thank you.
Sorry, could I just, I don't understand how a known contamination risk for 20 years can have been discovered because I went and got an esky full of foam from the river. Like that is just ridiculous.
Well, it seems to be a common thing.
Yes.
Is that the EPA is not discovering it, the community is and journalists are. Do you know if Kadia has used, I know you've got a, you know, been part of the community advisory group, I think at some point. You've got a fairly good understanding of their operations. Do you know if Kadia has used PFAS chemicals in the past or is still using them? Do you have any understanding of that?
Yes, they've admitted that they used it as firefighting foam until 2015. They were having a fire underground every six weeks. They.
Sorry, what were they doing every six weeks?
A fire, putting out a fire underground. Unbelievably. They told us recently that after all the recent publicity, they had done an audit on the site and discovered two drums, which they had struggled to have properly disposed of. Now, if they had been properly disposing of their drums in the past, because we've been told they've been dumped in the pit, if they had properly disposed of them in the past, they wouldn't have struggled to dispose of two drums today, is my belief.
I'm happy to provide details further on that question on notice, please. We'd appreciate sending through extra information.
Yes, thank you, because you've said that you think they used them up until 2015. Is it your understanding that this is the same kind of firefighting foam that was phased out in 2007 by Fire and Rescue New South Wales? Or are we talking something different?
No, my understanding is it's PFOS foam, PFOS firefighting foam.
Sorry, could I just hear the answer from the other witness?
Yeah, sorry, Gem?
I'm not sure that we definitively know the answer to that with regards to chemical composition, is where I'm coming from.
Okay. And at this point, can I just ask whether either of you know whether, because there's the exemption that exists for the use of firefighting foam for some extreme fire situations. Do you know whether there's a kind of exemption or that the mining industry is using this foam? Do you have any knowledge of that, either of you?
Don't know. They have put in writing, sorry Gemma, they have put in writing that they stopped using PFOS foam in 2015.
Okay, thank you.
Correct, yep.
Okay, is there any other questions for these witnesses? No, all right. Thank you so much, thank you both so much for appearing. Thanks, Ms Green, for appearing on the telephone, good old fashioned telephone. And the committee will be in touch, you've agreed to take some things on notice. They'll be in touch with you about that. Thank you so much for appearing. That's the end of our kootumbar hearing today. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for your patience with having me on the phone, I really appreciate it today.
Thanks.
Thank you.